All right, welcome to the Town Act and Planning Board meeting for September 1st on 2022 at 6:00 PM. All standing for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, did everybody get a chance to go over the minutes for August 4th?
Yeah.
Any motion?
With the motion, we accept the minutes for August 4th as written. Is there correction?
I got it.
You got it.
Of the date, August 4th.
And the end month?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
Thanks. Second. All in favor? What's the top four? All right, all business. Peppin Mineral Extraction, H Road, Lot 220-007, and West Shore Drive, 221-003, application for mineral extraction.
Hey, how you doing?
Hey, Matt.
Hi, it's good walking around with you guys there last Saturday.
With the bonding experience.
I'd say so. Good to get to know you all better. I think we did at least maybe three, four miles. Except Virginia cheated and got in the side-by-side, so.
She wants that for every meeting now.
So I did not bring the consultants with me tonight because I was kind of under the impression that we were just going to talk a little bit about the sidewalk and then decide if you guys wanted to have us lay anything else out out there with the surveyors, and then try to schedule another sidewalk. I would propose, I've talked to Rodney, and it sounds like the Saturday, the 24th, would work for him, so that was just a date I was going to throw out there, but obviously open for conversation.
Oh, we actually have Ben Smith, sorry.
Hey, nice to meet you.
North Star Planning with us tonight.
Sure, thanks, nice to meet you.
You too.
For the emails. I, Ben Smith, North Star Planning, and I am here because I've been working with the town and with the applicant on coordinating the materials for the review and talking a little bit about process for the review of conditional use. And I did prepare a memo dated August 11th, and I think that you all have that in your packet, and I know that's been distributed to the applicant and his team. And I want to just simply say at the beginning that, you know, I think this meeting is a good chance to check in on requirements and how things are going to proceed from this point. My understanding is that there was a sidewalk just last Saturday, right?
Mm-hmm.
And there was another one at least penciled in for a couple weeks from now, a few weeks from now. And the process for a conditional use review is that the applicant puts together a bunch of materials, and you have very thick packets, the consultants have been very busy preparing materials for this. I've sifted through that, provided some comments back to them on that submission. But the first thing that the board needs to do is decide when the application is complete. When have all of the submission requirements been provided to the town that you'll need in order to make an informed decision on the application? So, once that's done, once the board has voted to find the application complete, you've got 30 days to schedule the public hearing on the project, which is required under a conditional review, and make an act on the application to vote one way or the other on the application. So, kind of coming into tonight's meeting, understanding that there's still going to be another sidewalk, and there's still some outstanding questions around some of the vernal pool comments and the site entrance comments that I hope we can talk a bit about this evening, is, you know, the board is not obligated to make a finding of completeness on the application tonight, but if you were to do that, the implication would be, the public hearing would be scheduled within 30 days of tonight's meeting unless the board and the applicant agree that that's not enough time to pull additional information together. So, I think that my sense, and I'd be happy to hear from staff or the applicant, is that this would be a chance to have that informal conversation, talk about the sidewalk, talk about additional information or concerns or questions that people may have, and then make a finding of completeness on the application after that's part B of the sidewalk, I guess, after the second sidewalk. So I'd be happy to walk through any of the other portions of the review and kind of the technical aspects of the review, but from a process standpoint, that's, you know, coming into the meeting, that's where my recommendation is.
Can I just say, like, I remember we had addressed your memo pretty thoroughly last time we submitted all of our documents. So as far as on the way to completeness, we, I know Kyle Jacobson with St. Germain had like looked through your memo very thoroughly and really, I think, did his absolute best to try to address everything, just to try to give some reference on where we left off with the process there, so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But you updated your memo, didn't you?
There was, we provided some comments in the form of a memo, I believe that was in end of June, early July, and the response from St. Germain came back on July 22nd with the thick submission. Much of it frankly was detailing wetlands and vernal pool information, so that it was a lot, it was a big, heavy submission, but it was primarily concerned with environmental information that had to only be done at a certain time of year, so that information just wasn't available earlier in the process. So, we reviewed that information and offered some comments. I think that most of our comments, most of our comments based on that submission had to do at this point with getting some more information about traffic in general, but the entrance in particular, trying to understand how, you know, getting some additional information that the board would need in order to make a finding that traffic will be safe on H Road with this new operation. So I know that folks have been out and seen the site, but I can say, you know, having looked at the plan set, it is not at all surprising that there were a number of significant vernal pools found on a site this large. I think those have been accounted for, the applicant has a professional team of folks who went out and did this. And I know that there were some questions about, again, in kind of relation to the entrance, where the, there's some resource protection and there's some aquifer protection zone considerations. I think that we could hear a little bit more about either this evening potentially. As well as in the wash area, there's a vernal pool buffer shown in the vicinity of the wash area. So, I know that a project like this is exempt from a lot of the normal Chapter 500 stormwater review things that DEP has for stormwater, but it is not exempt from vernal pool regulations. And, you know, those, I think you're well on your way, you certainly documented all of the vernal pools to the best of the consultant's ability. So I have a high degree of confidence that what they're showing is accurate, and it's really just a question now of how do the buffers line up with some of the proposed roads and activity areas.
We could probably talk about what we saw out there when we were in the wash plant area, and we looked at where the nearby vernal pool was on Saturday. I think what I remember was that the vernal pool, remember it kind of dropped down into that big gully was where the pool was, and we were kind of up in like an elevated area was my memory when I looked at the, you know, the buffer out there with you guys. But I know you guys were very interested to see that when we went out on Saturday. I don't know if there's any comments related to that. But we are, as I had mentioned, we're trying to develop, I think it's 20, the 25% of the buffer area to have a little bit of additional space for the wash plant area. I think it would certainly be very possible to keep any wash ponds associated with that outside of that buffer. We might want to just use that buffer for storing some, like, stockpiled material.
Well, should we, should we walk through your memo, because there is some material to go over in there? Or should we just kind of delve into the site map? Or we could go over the operations manual? I don't know which one the board would like to start with.
I would defer to the chair, and, you know, I'd be happy to walk down through the memo, but if there's information in there that you want to focus in on rather than go through the whole thing, we could do that as well.
All right, well, we could just, just kind of take the memo page by page, and if anybody has comments.
You want to do the operations manual then?
Do you have a copy of that with you?
I do not have a copy of that. Yeah.
Do you want to get him a copy of the memorandum and the operations manual?
The wash plant was infringing a little bit, and I thought that was a big concern.
Yeah, I think map C105 really shows the area well.
Is it in this?
Jason gets back, we can get C105 up on the screen. There was, one thing I noticed is that.
I apologize, I didn't come more prepared, I didn't know you guys wanted to dive into some of this stuff, I am totally into it.
That's all right.
And I just apologize, I didn't come more prepared.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, since we have the consultant here, I feel like we should at least go over his memo, or any questions we have.
Yeah, I think that's good idea. And then I think we have to come back to the discussion of completeness. If I think there are other things we need, and we should try and enumerate those.
Well, I feel like we're definitely not complete because we need, there's DEP permits we need before the thing's going to be complete, for one example.
We get them, or you just give them to Jason, right?
Well, we look at them.
Right.
He submits it to Jason, and then we, I mean, we're talking multiple different permits. As far as I can tell, he's going to need a separate permit for each, each vernal pool set pack that he's infringing upon, one. And then there's some.
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, the engineers are aware of that, that's, it's a DEP notice of intent.
Right, but until we get the forms from DEP.
Right.
No way we can say it's complete. Which isn't a big deal, it's not going to slow us down right now, but.
No. And I think from what Ben said about transportation, I think we have to go out and get a transportation study. I know he's under the volume, but given that location, given the sightlines, heck, even when we were there on the sidewalk, it was a little scary a couple times with cars. So I think we need to have a look from the consultant, I don't know, we'll wait for Jason to come, but to make a determination on the impact to H Road, both from a safety and, you know, usage standpoint. And then I think that study should include whether it would be safer to go out on H, or.
West Shore.
West Shore, vice H Road, given existing conditions and trucks and that sort of thing. And so I don't.
We do have an adequate site distance survey, everybody's aware of that with corner posts, when that entrance location was chosen, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's one.
Which would involve trimming some trees on our property, and corner posts actually marked those out onsite when they were out there last. We'd have to do a bit of trimming in one spot to maintain the site distance.
To attain the site distance, because you're.
To maintain.
To maintain site distance.
The other question that I have, just reading over your operations panel, 25 trips for your trucks, then plus other trucks will be coming in, is that how I read it? I'm trying to find it again, and I just read it.
It was 50 trips, so, 50 trucks, 100 trips, and then a few employee, it was like 100 in total.
Was it 50 Peppin then plus?
Well, 50 trucks, not all Peppin.
The operator will not have more than a total of 50 trucks per day entering the site, including all company-owned and privately-owned vehicles. I'm not seeing the 25.
All right, I might have read that, 50 trucks. Somewhere I thought I read that other trucks would be coming in other than just Peppin, but I could be wrong.
Right, that's something we've gone over with other applicants, is how do they, how do they determine how many other trucks will be coming in, and do they just stop when there's, you know, like, that's all for today, and they don't let other people in to maintain that 50 trips per day? Or how do they even, you know, monitor how many vehicles there are? I think we should pick one document and kind of just, not necessarily read through it, but go through it, you know, and see who has comments on it, and just go, because otherwise we're kind of hodgepodge.
Right.
Which makes it disorganized.
I can talk more about truck track, traffic if you want me to, but that's up to you, I bet.
Well, we'll get to it, I mean.
I think we should. We need to utilize Ben, because he's here, and not jump around, like you're saying, Gavin.
Right.
Yeah, I agree with that. Let's go through his memo then. See, see if there's any, any questions for Ben about the memo, or just, I have some, you know, just some underlying areas that I'd like to just point out and discuss with everyone.
Yeah, that's fine.
So I don't, I don't have anything on the first two pages. Page three.
No, for real. Well, I'm going to give you a little story, excuse me.
Third paragraph is the buffer areas associated with the map's significant vernal pools. And, like I stated earlier, we can't approve that 25% until DEP does. I don't think we should really spend too much time on that until, until DEP says you can even do that.
I think the permits have already been submitted, I'd have to check with Kyle, but.
Jason, do you have copies of those?
No.
Not yet? Okay. So you submitted to DEP for the permits?
I would have to check with Kyle, but I believe he did submit, yes.
And?
And if he, if he didn't, within notice of intent, is it typically you were submitted? If you don't hear back in 30 days, then you're good to go, or something along that lines, I believe.
I'm not sure if that's the type of permit that we're.
We're going to need the actual okay from DEP.
Oh, important, yeah.
So, you know, what you just said doesn't apply, we need it in writing.
Yeah.
When they, when they get it done, the Department of Environmental Protection approvals should either be provided such activities within the buffers. So, we need those, right?
Also, and I don't know if it'll be in that response from DEP, but there, the Flycatcher or whoever did the vernal pool study identified a significant vernal pool kind of near the entrance, that I think, Matt, you said it was man-made, so in your map making, you haven't identified it as SVP with the, with the buffers. But I think we need DEP or whoever's the right people to weigh in on that.
That study was done by Tig and Bond.
Right, and they identified it as a significant vernal pool.
Yeah, if you look at overall site wetlands and habitat map V101, it's, it's hashed in purple on that, that map, and defined as significant. It's on this map, too.
But it isn't circled in purple on this map.
It's right there, yeah, there's inconsistencies, some of the maps say it's not significant, some of them say it is.
The latest submitted maps, which were done after the vernal pool studies were completed, say that it's not significant, because I don't think that they found any, like, habitat out there, and then.
They did, it's right in your report.
Yeah, it's in.
In the report?
It's in this.
Okay.
And it's on this.
And they did.
The last map in the packet.
It's more, it's labeled as a significant vernal pool?
Yep, it's hashed in purple.
Okay, oh, I see it.
Did you have two different people do those studies?
So, what's that?
Did you have two different people out on site doing, because there was a change, when was there a change?
There was a wetland study that was done, which was part of the original plans, and that, I don't remember.
Then it determined that it was stuff.
Then, yes, yeah.
When?
That was during the vernal pool assessment. When Tig and Bond went out there, they looked at it, and they made the determination that it was man-made.
So different, different company, different people?
Originally, it was a wetland scientist that had labeled it as a potential vernal pool. The wetland scientist, on the plans originally, we put potential vernal pools, we labeled them all throughout the plans. We weren't 100% clear on what was a vernal pool or what wasn't, but we had reason to believe that there was some out there, and the wetland scientists had marked them accordingly. So, on the original plans, we showed buffers in some areas that were 250 feet. After the vernal pool study was done formally, the plans were revised, and some of those buffers changed in certain places. That was one of the places where the buffer would have changed after they actually went out and did the formal study.
Well, the formal study says it's a significant vernal pool, and it says it was natural slash modified was the vernal pool status, so, you know, I just think we need to have Salamander masses, fairy shrimp, wood frog, so, I mean, it was a significant vernal pool by that report. And I just think we need DEP or somebody to weigh in, and maybe it comes as part of your approval that says it's okay to not have that as an SVP, and you don't have to have the associated buffer.
Yeah, we could certainly do that.
What was, what was the number or reference?
SVP 11, 11DB Delta Bravo.
So the image that's up on the screen right now is showing the, that there's a resource protection area right near the entrance where the maintenance building is, and I think what you're saying is there should be, like some of these other ones that have the purple outline and the buffer around them, is that what you're saying, is that there's a vernal pool listed in the book but not shown on the plan set?
Yeah, well, it is, if we get, Jason, can you pull up map V101, it's the last one in the packet?
I got one of these, you guys can use.
Because some of the maps say it's significant, some of them don't.
It could, it could be labeled that because it's a non-significant vernal pool.
This one right here? Yep, right there. You can see it's green for habitat, potentially suitable, and outlined in purple.
Next one over.
Yeah.
Yep, that one's outlined in purple.
It may be worth clarifying, too, if there were some comments in there about how it was man-made, it may not be regulated by the DEP, even if it meets the number of egg masses and so forth, if it's, sometimes they'll say, oh, if it's a really old gravel pit or some kind of excavation, and it's naturalized, we, DEP, will regulate it. But otherwise, man-made excavations or dammed-up portions of a brook or something like that are exempt from significant vernal pool. So, it does raise a question, I think it's certainly worth clarifying, but I, it may not be an oversight, it may actually be that they've noted it, and they say it's not meeting the criteria, but it's worth clarifying.
The consultants said it met the criteria, so.
Yeah.
And it's.
And the maps do, too.
The pool status calls it natural slash, with dash, modified. And so, yeah, it was probably modified, man-made somehow.
Right.
But I, I think we need.
It's probably modified for like one of those borrowed pits back in the day.
I went to a DEP workshop.
It was, that, that area, we went on the sidewalk, you could see where there was a big excavation hole there, and then my dad kind of pointed out, they took all the gravel from there to build the dump up the street. That's when they built the dump back in the 40s, all the material that they used to build the road going in there came from right there.
Yeah. I did go to a vernal pool workshop with DEP, DEP-led, and they said that some vernal pools that have been embellished by man are still considered significant, it's not, like, there's no, like, clear line, like the consultant was, like Ben was saying. So it's, I think we should at least get Flycatcher to, to weigh in on it.
Yeah, yeah, I'd agree.
Well, Flycatcher, I think DEP has to weigh in on it.
Flycatcher has been talking hand-in-hand with DEP, and Rodney could comment more on that, but there's been conversations back and forth between the state and the consultants. There definitely has been, so.
Well, maybe we can get copies of the correspondence pertaining to this specific area.
Yeah.
And I feel like it should be included in your, you know, because you're going to have to get, as far as I can tell, you need to get a separate permit for each vernal pool that you're affecting.
Right.
In the buffer, and.
So we have.
Just kind of add it to the list.
So it looks to me, Gavin, like there's three, potentially four, vernal pools that will be impacting to a certain extent.
Yeah, there's two up by the wash and stockpile area, one to the north of it, one to the south of it.
Okay.
Two up there.
Those two.
Yep, and then there's, I can't, I think it's just two in extraction area number one.
Wash point down here, right?
No, that's.
Keep going south with the pointer.
That's Land Trust.
No, keep going south, now to the left. Yep, those two, so that's four right there. And there's the one by the road that we were just discussing.
And then that one.
Yeah.
Look at all the vernal pools we're not touching.
Yeah, and I will say, you know, the applicant is correct in, in saying you are allowed some amount of disturbance within that 250-foot buffer. I've also seen applicants work with DEP so that sometimes those buffers actually get shifted, so that you may end up with a smaller buffer on one side in exchange for a larger buffer on the other side.
This is kind of a new thing with DEP, I don't remember that from the workshop I went to.
Well.
All, that's not, it's definitely a newer thing, and I'm not familiar with it.
The, it does, I think rightly raise the question that the DEP should be approving disturbance within those buffer areas that's regulated significant wildlife habitat, and there's, there's no, like, immediate, you know, this project can't move forward, kind of thinking. this project can't move forward, kind of thinking on my part. I think that it's more of a red flag to simply say, we need some more information from DEP on whether or not the proposed impacts within the buffer areas are going to pass muster with them.
Can we identify these areas by number out of the book, their study? So we'll know exactly what they're looking for. But when we want this information, it needs to be on specific vernal pools.
Right, yeah, they all have numbers.
Okay. Give me a list of numbers.
SVP 11 DB is the one by the road. The two we just talked about down the lower end are 12 DB and 13 DB.
Do you have a number on the wash plant ones? Were you searching for that?
I'm looking.
A map so small, it's difficult.
That little one was 11.
11, yeah.
That's 11? And the other two were?
Yeah, down, right there and right there, yeah.
Right there. We need those two for the wash.
I'm not sure about the these are the ones, but they might be. I think it's SVP 09 DB and 06 DB.
Jason, can we get that map up there?
I can't read that.
Yes, really small. I don't know, do you have this whole?
I'm not sure it's labeled on that plan.
This is in their report.
Wait, do you have this whole thing electronically?
The report? The StanTech report in the binder?
I don't know if I have that in the, not that I know of.
May have it electronically, if folks want to see it up on the screen. Do you know what, is there a sheet number on that binder submission?
Figure one. After the writing, it's for the summaries. Or it's in the appendices.
Appendix A?
Yeah, figure one.
So appendix A, figure one is the reference. Yeah, itty bitty numbers there. So, I have it on here. Can we use that map as a reference when we?
Yeah.
I can't read those enough.
Did you get?
I wrote them all down, but that's going to be our map that we got these from, right?
Yes.
Okay. That's just so everybody knows exactly what map we're using and what specifically vernal pools we're looking at. So this five.
Five.
Total, yep. So we'll be looking for five.
Six. I concur. I zoomed in on the electronic version. It's 12 and 13 and six and nine.
So we're saying there's five?
Five.
11 DB near the H road is a non-significant, as labeled on the plans? As labeled on the plans. I know that the report's saying something different.
And part of the plan says something different.
Right, okay. So we need clarification on that.
Yeah, and then those two up by the wash plant land appear to be VPs, not SVPs.
So the graphic, and we can bring it up if you want, but it's differentiating between SVPs, which have buffers around them, significant vernal pools, and VPs, which are just normal, regular vernal pools that don't have a buffer.
Okay.
And I think what the, what folks are saying here is that VP 06 and VP 09 are the two that are up near the wash plant. They're not showing buffers on this appendix graphic, but they are showing buffers on that graphic. SVP 11 is the one down near the entrance. It's labeled SVP with a buffer on this graphic, but it's not showing a graphic on that one. So I think that's kind of what people are asking, just which one is the one to go by.
Okay. Yeah, I wasn't aware that there was a.
Well, you got so many maps, you start comparing them all.
Yeah.
They're not all identical.
Well, I can narrow it down to this map and the one map that shows those two, the circles. I mean, if any.
Yeah.
VP's looking, where are they?
Right.
Those two maps would have to be, go along with it so they can tell the difference or know exactly what we're talking about. Yeah, especially the big map, because this shows the overlap of the wash area into the vernal pool area and the zone you were talking about.
Okay, so back to the memo. So the next paragraph, Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife has requested 100-foot buffers on the two streams on the property. And your maps show 75-foot buffers. Seems like an easy one if you're willing to increase those buffers. One of them is the stream with the culvert crossing that you go from excavation area two to three.
Yep.
So that one, looks like we'll be asking for 100-foot buffer on that. And. Find the other one.
DEIFW has requested 100-foot buffer. So they've requested, it's a request, but I would like to take a second to probably look at what the formal law is there as far as buffers go and see how that might impact the project.
Well, I feel like it's likely the board will have the same request.
Okay. We'll see that stream when we go out for the second site walk. It, part of the year it runs and part of the year it doesn't.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And Ben, you, can you point us out the second stream that it's, that they're referring to? Is it the one in the northern part of the property on, within the off of her protection district there?
Yes, those are the only two streams that are shown. They've mapped all the wetlands, but they're showing those as streams. And they are showing a 75-foot stream protection buffer. DP's requested 100. And that's what's reflected.
Department of Inland Wildlife.
Not DP, Inland Fisheries, yep.
So just, we're all clear that this is one of them right here. And then I'm feeling like probably we're talking about this region right here on the other one? Is that?
Those are the only two defined streams on the property.
Okay. And then on page four, the third paragraph kind of says the same thing.
Setbacks.
Yeah, and then, just wanted to, the next paragraph points out that there's a culvert, not a bridge. But that's something we're going to want to see at the next site walk. Anything else on that page, anybody?
Didn't we have a written response submitted by St. Germain to this document? I believe they submitted, like, they went through your document and actually formally replied to a lot of this?
They did. They submitted a formal reply to comments that we had drafted up. It was actually April 25th, so that's a response to comments. Their response was dated July 22nd. And it's about four or five pages of cover memo, kind of like that line-by-line response. And then about 230 pages of vernal pool and environmental findings. Within that, they did describe that bridge. It was labeled on the plan set as a bridge. And I had, in those April comments, said, what is this bridge? What does it look like? And they said, well, this is what it is and it's better described as a woods road over a culvert.
Yeah, there's pictures of it in here.
Yes. So, you know, my, kind of, I guess, follow-up is, I think there were some representations in that that, you know, there weren't any anticipated changes or widening or any other things that would disturb the stream that goes through there. So I think from that standpoint, that was kind of the character of the response.
Guess we're on to the next page, traffic access and congestion. And this is where we start dealing with the site distance. Yeah, page five. The third paragraph reads, site distance at the proposed entrance is approximately 430 feet in either direction. The required site distance for access is, with more than 30% of traffic meetup of vehicles larger than standard passenger vehicles on a 35 mile per hour road is 455 feet. So this is stating that your site distance is shy by 25 feet in either direction. Both directions.
I would have to talk to Dana Libby about that. He did the study and see what his comments were on that.
I definitely think your new location of the entrance is better than, it's the best location on H road.
I agree. We walked that road thoroughly to try to find the spot that we thought would work the best for vehicular flow. And it's right across from the landscape depot, so you already have some trucks kind of coming in and out of there. So it was, you guys remember, it was right across the street from there. So we think it's the most ideal spot. We definitely don't think that Westshore Drive should even be considered an option. Just knowing the conditions of that roadway and knowing the culvert that's over there. So we did put a lot of thought and energy into this, but I can speak with corner posts and ask about that 25 feet, so.
Jason, I said this while you're out, though. I think we need to get a study done.
Traffic study?
One of the consultants get to, you know, look at safety and impact on the H road. And in fact, whether, I mean, I don't necessarily disagree about Westshore, but we should have the specialists give us a recommendation on that.
H road's getting loaded up.
Well, we heard that at public hearings.
So I, my memo talked a little bit about site distance. Certainly made that comment that Gavin had mentioned. I think that there was a response back from the surveyor relative to that specific comment about how it would be possible to get additional site distance. I, that would be great. I would like to see some information about that and how that would be. I agree, it's likely to be the best location overall. I think the other comment around traffic was related to how busy the site could potentially be and how many trucks would be coming in and out of there. The folks at St. Germain, I think rightly, noted that there's not going to be 100 passenger vehicle equivalents, which is essentially saying 100 cars or trucks, like gravel trucks count as two. So there's not likely to be 100 cars or 50 trucks in the peak hour. The overall daily trips are likely, over time, to average out to be less than that, maybe even a lot less than that. But I think it's important that the board think a little bit about how the operations of a gravel pit typically work. And maybe the applicant's probably in a better position to talk about that than I am. But, you know, based on experience in other communities and other operations, sometimes they're very busy, depending where the jobs are. And sometimes they, you know, you could be really busy at that gravel pit for, you know, two or three weeks straight and then job shift. And then it's pretty quiet for a couple of weeks. So it's not a consistent, like a retail business where you just, you know, have hours and traffic is consistent over time. It kind of ebbs and flows depending on the work and the demand. So with that in mind, I had suggested that it's probably going to be pretty tough to put any kind of conditions that say, you know, based on the number of trips, someone from the town is going to have to, you know, count trucks. Or I've seen some conditions in other places where they said, you know, once you get up and running, you know, we're going to do another traffic study in two years. But those things are really tough to schedule because, number one, the operation's already going. And it makes it tough to, you know, if there's additional requirements or adjustments that need to be made once the operation's going as opposed to doing it now and thinking about what it could be. It's better to get a sense of the overall traffic and how that might change over time. And I know that even, I think it was in the operations manual, you said, you know, we're likely to have a few weeks, just based on holidays, that are going to be a lot slower even during the middle of what would otherwise be kind of peak season. So I would hate to, or I wouldn't advise the board to, you know, let's think about this, you know, kind of long-term average without thinking about what some of those busier times might look like.
We actually did propose in here that on 4th of July week, we would just have five trucks per day come into the site because we know that's a busy holiday week and that there's a lot going on around here with the lakes. And was something that we have written here for that whole week. We would just have five trucks come in. But to comment to that a little bit more, the 50 trucks is not what we anticipate having every day. That's like when you get a job locally that you want to do and you want to be able to keep up with it. You know, get an opportunity to bring some gravel for a subdivision they're building down the street. That's when we would utilize that 50 trucks per day. But on average, I think it would be more around like 20 to 30 trucks per day total. We have two triaxle dump trucks and two trailer dumps. And coming from our plant in Sanford, all those trucks can probably do about five or six trips a day. So that's four trucks at about five to six trips per day, which is 20 to 25 trips per day. Plus, plus the people that are going to come in to purchase? Plus, yes, we could have some people come in. I'm assuming that's probably mostly going to be homeowners, maybe smaller pickup trucks. There's other, many other gravel pits, as everybody knows, in Acton where people can buy material. They're not necessarily just going to be coming to our location. But yes, there will be some additional traffic there. But I think as far as the traffic that we create, it's, we're not going to be doing 50 trucks a day. But we want to really try to get approved for that because if we get the opportunity to do a bigger project, we want to be able to do it, so.
Did we talk about reducing the speed limit on each road? Because that's one way that you could conform with your site distances that if it wasn't, if it was a 30 mile per hour zone instead of a 35, your site distance wouldn't have to be 455 feet.
That's true. In one of those bullets, I had suggested that the applicant should review. the applicant should review existing conditions on H Road. Uh, we talked about site distance and location, but I think pavement and shoulder width and the construction of H Road in that location are um potentially valuable to have a sense of. And uh, you know, based on what you find, based on estimated number of trucks and the existing conditions out there, existing traffic volumes, existing pavement widths and conditions, uh, there's a number of things that you could do, including a reduction in the speed limit in H Road, truck centering signage, advisory, truck speed limits, acceleration, deceleration lane, like a turn lane, uh, wider shoulders and, and probably some other things. So, um, I think on the light end, you know, it could be posting new signage or, or making sure trucks are certainly traveling at a slower speed, even if the overall speed limit doesn't change. That would help uh with turning traffics, cause I think the main thing with site distance is loaded trucks uh take a while to accelerate, and if there's a site distance issue and there's a truck that's trying to get up to speed, uh, that could cause conflicts. So, if um, that's not enough, if signage isn't enough, then uh there are things that you can do to widen the road even at the entrance, even if it's not, uh, you know, reconstructing H Road all the way from here. It, you know, there could be things in the vicinity of the entrance to make sure the trucks have space to slow down or get up to speed.
Reality is, nobody drives 35 on that road anyway. So, you know, putting the signs out there to change the speed limit, to get the site, to get the site distance and everything correct is all well and good.
I drive 35, you don't?
You know, again, I, I you've said then, but again, I would like somebody to come and give us specific recommendations. Widen the road, change the speed limit, what, you know.
Cause you know, thinking out of your pit with a fully loaded truck, if you've got a car coming 35, well, 35 plus, your truck's not gonna be up to speed on that little
I look at the old gravel pit that we had further down the H Road on that sharp bend, which is now owned by Bob McDonald, but have there been a lot of accidents there? Cause that might be a good case reference. I mean, that is a sharp bend, and that's a pretty busy gravel pit right there. And I'm not aware of an overwhelming amount of accidents on that part of H Road where there's another entrance. And we all know that curve right there. It's pretty bad.
They also got the warning signs of trucks entering and that, you know.
Okay, well, look, uh, we can all come up with potential solutions. We, we need specialists, somebody to tell us what, what's the best solution. We heard significant comments at public hearings about the safety on H Road.
Right.
And I don't think we, my opinion is, we're not doing due diligence if we don't get a specific, specific recommendations from, you know, the experts.
So, you're asking for a traffic study?
I am.
By the applicant?
Well, the applicant would pay. We would go to either Ben's organization or, I don't know, York, somebody to uh perform that study. That's my recommendation.
I think that's reasonable.
Does Diane Morabito still do that, Craig? She does. Did she works as a consultant for traffic? Yeah. She used to work for the state of Maine for a long time. Okay. Diane Morabito is a traffic consultant that I've worked with in the past, so I think is really good.
What was her last name?
Morabito.
Yes, I, if someone like Diane, yeah, could definitely take a look at the existing road conditions and the proposed use and, and, you know, make recommendations based on her experience that, you know, we could look at or that the town might have a traffic person that they go to for things like that as well. But uh, Diane is a licensed engineer. She's a professional who, again, would be very qualified to, to do that.
Anything else on page five of the memo?
Do you have a contact for her, Ben?
Uh, I, I have her info. I've, I've worked with her in the past. I, I think that and I heard someone say it, it really should be something that, that uh, the applicant can, can work with. Uh, someone like Diane, it may not be Diane, but someone with similar qualifications and experiences Diane to, you know, provide a, a professional opinion on that.
Yeah. We worked with her on a gravel pit in Sanford, and she was, I really liked working with her. She was smart, professional, so.
Any discussion on page six?
Down the bottom there are wastewater, solid waste, solid waste, rubbish. Single sort recycling be collected dumpster be contracted to a licensed haul. Are we gonna need some kind of proof for that contract?
I, I think what um we were looking for an indication for is if, if it was gonna be, you know, the applicant kinda collecting materials and taking them to uh some kind of facility or contracting out with someone who, who's licensed to do that. I was, I was more concerned uh in the review about where those materials are gonna be, if they're gonna be kept inside the maintenance building or if they're gonna be outside, what is, if they're gonna be in a dumpster on a pad, kind of thing.
Are they on, are they currently located on the, the sheets? I don't remember seeing them.
Um, I don't think we have a dumpster location labeled, if that's what you're asking. It would be, if we had one, it would be next to the maintenance garage, um, which should be shown on the plans towards the entrance.
Yeah, i- in, in the
There it is.
Response to comments, um, St. Germain had said that there are gonna be dumpsters in the vicinity of the maintenance building, but I, I didn't see them on the plan set. So, I thought that comments really just, please, just make sure they're on the next iteration and they've got some kind of uh concrete.
Okay.
Anything else on page six? Okay, page seven. Uh, stormwater drainage. Yeah, um, internally drained extraction areas are exempt from DEP stormwater requirements, but that doesn't cover all the areas you're gonna be operating in. The second bracket there, um, DEP permit by rule must be obtained for the development of the maintenance building area. Um, so that's another uh thing we'd like to see. And I, I did wanna ask you about the um stormwater drainage for the, the wash area and the uh processing area. Like how that was gonna, I know you said for the wash area, you were gonna be using stormwater to feed the ponds.
Yeah, um, that whole
How are those, cause that's a, I think it was like 14, 14.6 acres. And how is that area gonna be treated? Is that whole area gonna be uh harvested and grubbed?
Um, I mean, yeah, I would think it's gonna be, we're gonna have to stay, that's, that's part of the, considered the, part of the internally drained gravel pit. That area is designed to be internally drained, like the rest of the gravel pit. So, that area, I think we're, we're shooting for, I have to look here, 30 acres of open area on site. So, we can't go over 30 acres, period, um, in extract, in all the extraction areas and in the wash plant area. So, we're not trying to open up that entire area. We're just trying to have that as part of our open acreage on site, which that's peace of mind for the town because if that's part of your gravel pit's open acreage, then you guys have that area bonded. You have a performance bond with the town and with the state um that you'll have. In the event that an operator was ever to bail off the site, there'd be money available to restore that area. So, that is just gonna be part of, of, of the open area.
Right.
And it is an internally drained area, and I would, it would be smart to put those ponds, you know, somewhere where they're a little bit lower, where they can collect some rainwater. Probably be helpful for, you know, having the water that we need to kinda keep the, to wash some stone out there. But it's not necessarily gonna be like, I'm not trying to infer that it's going to be like a big drainage pond for the entire 15 acre plot.
Right, that's, that's what I'm wondering if we need, if we need a stormwater drainage plant for the, for this area. And I also, um, I did notice in your original map here
Yes.
This one that you submitted that isn't, isn't from St. Germain, that you had the um wash area and processing areas denoted separately.
Correct.
Right here, you had, this was your wash area and this was your processing area.
Yep.
Whereas now, on the new map, it's just considered one area and, and nothing is, is denoted as a processing area. We just have the wash area and the stockpile areas.
Right.
So.
So, that was because of the vernal pool study. Um, that's what Kyle had told me was that, I think, because of, especially that, the larger vernal pool we're seeing right here, um, that's kinda crossing into the wash plant area that, that he, he ended up putting the areas together because that infringed on it or something.
Well, would we be able to move the proposed wash and stockpile area to the lower left of that whole 14.6 acres kind of where, where nothing can be, yeah, would it, and, and to the, and to the other side of the road? Cause it seems like if, if those operations were going on to the southwest of where they are currently, you wouldn't be dealing with those two vernal pool buffers at all.
Those are high, aren't they? Those areas, Gavin?
Well, they're higher than either side because it's just, either side of that area is wetland.
So, they would have to dig down to get the water, wouldn't they? Wouldn't they have to remove all of that material? Wouldn't that be more invasive? I thought that was
Well, the ponds aren't gonna be groundwater.
I thought they weren't touching that area, though. I mean, Matt, how much of that area, 14?
That's the processing area on this map, but on this map, it's not denoted as anything.
Right, because they, so they decided not to use it.
Yeah, but there is no processing area on the new map, so I wanna know where that is.
Proposed wash and stockpile.
So, you have
Cause they're gonna be doing more, more operations.
Is stockpile the same? My question is, is it always saying it's processing?
Well, no, cause the, the process, I mean, Matt can speak to that better than I can as to what the process area, area is because it's not really um indicated on the maps. But I assume it's where they would probably have a screener or, I mean, Matt, Matt would know.
The, the purpose of the processing area was to be um like for some, if we wanted to take in some loom from offsite and screen it, they would be, that area would be for like any offsite materials that were brought on, which I've written more about here in the operations manual. And I believe it would include like, if we wanted to bring in concrete with no rebar, materials that the DEP considers inert, um, so concrete with no rebar, um, asphalt, um, loom. And I've got that spelled out here somewhere in the operations manual. But um, that would be where we process those materials. And then, I guess the plans should be labeled a little better here, but the intent was to have that area, you know, in the same area as the, as the wash plant area. I think it, I wouldn't have a problem potentially moving that area if that was a big concern. I'd have to kinda look at the plans a little bit more closely. But I think it's probably a good idea to maybe keep them together because it's less impact at the end of the day, if you keep them in the same area. But um, I can certainly look at, if you guys want me to, to take a look here and read what it says in the operations manual about that, I can. Uh, certain offsite material will be brought into the site for the purpose of processing, selling and reclaiming. Offsite materials not used for the purpose of reclamation will not be brought into the aquifer protection district area. Offsite materials not used for the purpose of reclamation will not be stored in any approved mineral extraction areas and may only be in one designated area shown on site and reclamation plans labeled proposed processing area. This area will be at least 10 feet above the groundwater table levels, so.
So, we need to get that on there, like, it's not, processing area is not labeled on the map.
Yeah, it should be.
Um, you do have approximate location of material stockpiles, which I feel may be indicating those um materials you're bringing in. But um, once again, they, they, they are partially in the vernal pool buffer. And I was just wondering if you could, you know, this, this area over here, you don't, you're not, you're not dealing with the buffer. It's the same way, so.
It would be very possible to keep, I think, any imported materials outside of the vernal pool buffer. Like, that would, that's something that we could put right on the plans, for sure. Yeah.
Yeah. Well, there's also, what, what, on the upper left is the large oval. And it just says stockpile area on the map. And I was wondering, you know, exactly what that is and, and could we move that outside of the vernal pool buffer as well? Looks like there's plenty of room just south of it. Yeah, the larger oval. Yeah, well, yeah.
It would kinda depend on the topography there and whether it makes sense to have an internally drained area right there. But it's certainly something that we could look at more closely.
All right, so back to the stormwater drainage. I'm still curious if we, if we um should be looking for a DEP permit for the, for the processing area. Ben, did you have any input on that?
Uh, no, I, I think St. Germain was referencing the processing as part of the gravel pit operations, whereas a maintenance building is not. The, theoretically, a maintenance building could be somewhere else. It's not part of a gravel operation. So, that would, that would be subject to permitting, so the disturbance and grading and those kinds of things associated with the building. Based on the anticipated amount, uh, they're saying that that would be a permit by rule. It wouldn't need a full permit, and that's the kind of permitting that you, you submitted. And if you don't hear anything back in a couple of weeks, it's approved.
Yeah, well, the, this, um, the St. Germain didn't really um reference the processing area the same way as the operations manual did. So, I was, I, that's kinda why I was wondering where the processing area was, if we could get that nailed down. And um, and get all those facilities out, you know. It looks like there's enough room to move them outside of the buffers. Was there a reason that you picked the upper right as opposed to the lower left of that region?
I mean, it's, when you're gonna be bringing um crushed stone from the gravel extraction area and kinda bringing it over to the wash plant area and washing the stone. So, it's ideally, it's there. It's closer to the extraction area, so it's closer to the processed stone that you bring over. It is further away, I think, from any roadways, but um, certainly if it was more towards the H Road, it, it still appears that it would be quite a distance from H Road. You know, there will be a, there will be like a screening plant that's operating there and potentially a, like a crushing plant as well that would be breaking up asphalt or concrete. So, noise is always a consideration, but um, I, I, I think that we, from what I recall, we looked at the topography there too, and it seemed like we looked at the topography there too and it seemed like it would be a relatively flat area where we could, where we could set up, but could certainly look at it more closely.
I, I, just maybe a final thought on that is the locations of structures and operations areas like crushing and screening and washing, those kinds of things are really gonna be elements of the site plan approval. I think that stockpile locations by their nature are, are gonna change. Like, they're gonna get bigger, they're gonna get smaller, they're gonna move within the cleared area. There's, there's a cleared area, like a tree line shown here and a road kinda going through the cleared area, so it, you know, I don't think we would consider, I wouldn't consider, I won't speak for Jason, but, uh, you know, because they're only showing four piles there, that four piles would be part of the approval. Like, I think that's more illustrative-
A location.
Right, yeah, but general locations, yes. I, I think that's, that's an important part of this, but I don't, I don't know that we need to get too concerned about the exact footprint or number of those stockpiles cause those will change over time.
Just, I just noticed that the, the largest one is, is inside the Vernal Pool buffer and it seems like it could just be on the other side of the road and, and that would completely, like we didn't have any, we could easily get operations outside of that one Vernal Pool buffer altogether, I think.
I think it-
readily.
It, yeah, and I absolutely hear what you're saying and I, we talked about that a little bit when we're talking more about the Vernal Pool specifically is-
Right.
How much is gonna be happening within those buffer areas?
Yeah.
I did have a, a question for, for Ben about the maintenance building. It kinda, it has to do with our ordinance. And it's in the Performance Standards on page 54, number 7. And it's just interpretation of this verbiage and I can read number 7. No equipment debris, junk or other material shall be permitted on an extraction site except for those directly related to active extraction operations and any temporary shelters or buildings erected for operations and equipment used in conjunction therewith shall be removed within 30 days following the completion of the active extraction operations. And I was curious how this related to the maintenance building and if we needed to get a, an escrow to deal with the possible removal of this building? I mean, it seems like-
Yeah, what page was that on?
Page 54 in the Performance Standards for, for Mineral Extraction in the Ordinance, number 7. And I'm just, I, I'm just unclear, I'm not particularly oriented one way or the other on this, it's just the verbiage is- It's mostly in the second sentence, related to active extraction operations and any temporary shelters or building erected for operations and equipment used in conjunction therewith shall be removed. And I just wanna, I mean, I wanna know if we're supposed to be-
Yeah.
preparing that, you know what I'm saying?
I, I think that, that's a fair question. My read of that section is that it's, the, the key portions of this is it relates to extraction site. That building is not proposed for an extraction site itself. And it's not a temporary shelter or building. I think it's gonna be there as long as, you know, for the lifetime of the pit. I think that that would be more relative to the, the operations and if, if there were to be reclaimed areas and we know that those, you kinda have to reclaim and stabilize as you go into new areas. And if there's any structures that are part of that, then the removal of those structures, and I'm trying to think of what kinda structure that might be referencing, but-
Well, it says erected for operations in equipment used in conjunction therewith. It sounds just like a maintenance building to me.
Somebody might put up like a salt shed or something, you know, like a temporary-
On an extraction site, not in an extraction site. So the whole site we're talking about, on an extraction site, not in an extraction area.
That's considered an accessory to conditional use, that building?
Right, no, I'm not questioning whether you can have the building.
Right.
I'm questioning if, if we're, if we should be preparing to be, to have you bond with us for the, for that building in case it needs to be removed, just like you would bond with us for the revegetation. So if the project was to come into the ownership of the town, you know, just like reclamation.
The building would have value if it came into the ownership of the town.
Well, but at the same time, it's an abandoned building that could, could be a liability to the town if we were dealing with it, not just. I had this discussion with, with someone else and I'm still unclear on it, but I feel like it's something that I wanna get a, an interpretation of number 7 nailed down for this.
I, I think the, the code officer would be the one to provide that specific interpretation. My read is that it's, it's more for temporary structures is, and, you know, if the applicant could provide more info on, you know, there, we, I don't think any of the requirements around building facade and materials and those kinds of things apply because it's within the operations of the site and buffered and screened, so.
Right.
Um, the, I, I will only speak from my own experience that those, those kinds of structures are not typically included in reclamation bonds.
Well, it would be a separate bond, so to speak.
But this is being considered a build, a permanent building?
That, that's how I was-
Cause it says temporary shelters or building, it doesn't say temporary shelters or temporary building. Well, it's, it's something I, I just wanna get clear interpretation on cause it's not, I don't find it clear.
Yep.
If it's gonna be on concrete pad, it'll be a permanent building.
What did you do with Billy Plant's garage?
It's permanent. Well, the thing is that that's one of the things that actually brought-
Does he have a, a performance bond?
Actually brought this to my attention was that I felt like we may have overlooked it in his project and I'd like to just get an interpretation of this verbiage. I don't, cause I don't have a-
Yeah.
I don't have an orientation in it, I just, I feel like it needs to be addressed.
So I, I, I think that's fair. I don't know if Jason's gonna be able to make an interpretation of this, this evening, but I think it's fair to provide that to the board.
I think we might as well ask, I think, I think the board should ask for, ask legal for an interpretation of that. Didn't he define his outside of the extractive area, extraction area? Um, I'm on page 54, number 7.
But we're looking at the entire site being an extraction area, not just the area of operation. So it's, the interpretation is, are we talking about a specific area within an area or the entire area, right? Seems we have an extraction-
Well, the whole property is an extraction site, this is the whole site.
Right, the entire-
I don't, I don't, I don't have any problem with that. It's, it's mostly the, Jason, are you there?
Yeah, I'm here.
It's mostly the, and any temporary shelters or building erected for operations and equipment used in conjunction therewith shall be with, removed within 30 days following the completion of the active extracuration operations.
In my mind, you're looking at the maintenance building being a permanent site, but then when they're doing, let's say, washing, they decide to build a plywood enclosure to keep the rain out. That would be temporary, that would be removed after the operation's over. But the maintenance building becomes part of the property.
But is it, no, well, I don't know.
I think we should ask legal.
And it's, yeah, and it's-
Or building erected for operations, maintenance falls under operations.
Yeah, no, it's totally, it totally falls within this, I just, I'm not, I, I just feel like we need to- I don't know, I'm just, just weird verbiage.
No, it's, yeah, it's conflicting with, with definitions about permanent and temporary structures too.
Alright, let's do that.
Try to legal.
You wanna ask Lankowski about that particular verbiage and just get his opinion? Cause that'll straighten it out.
I get it.
That's under the new ordinance, June 19th, 22. D7.
Maybe we could, you know-
Any clarification?
Yeah, yeah, clarification and-
And then we can tell them the situation we're looking at.
Yeah, and, and do we have to be concerned with the life of this building or is it just a building that's there?
Yeah, because it does, it brings up a valid point. If we have to reclaim that property and the cost of reclaiming would include whatever building or structure-
Right, I mean, it's just a, yeah, an abandoned building is a liability to the town.
Absolutely.
Whether it's temporary or permanent.
Is there any system in place with other businesses that, you know, build buildings on?
Well, this is specific to mineral extraction.
Okay.
I, I feel like your, the legal is probably gonna come up with something in your favor, but, on this, but I still wanna get it clarified because I don't want it to come back and be something we overlooked.
Yeah.
Did you, did you get a chance to locate it?
Yeah.
Number, number 7, that's what we're talking about.
I'm, I am not a lawyer, but I can, number 7?
No, but you can see what we're, what we're reading.
Yep.
It does say extraction sites.
Number 7, you said?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, no equipment debris, junk or other materials.
Trying to remember.
The word temporary just really stands out to me.
Right, but it says any temporary structures or building erected, so it doesn't say anything about the building being temporary directly, you know, from a legal standpoint.
Temporary stands out to you, but building erected for operations, that does.
I guess we're all biased in different ways.
Right.
Well, that's assuming too, temporary would be like a pole barn if you're down and you just-
If it's got a slab and footing, it's permanent.
You know, get right down to it, all buildings are temporary, eventually-
Yeah, temporary within.
Well, ask Lankowski if you would.
We'll get a clarification.
You know, that's all I need.
But we haven't. What else on that page?
Um, last paragraph, are you gonna have a well at the wash plant?
Um, I would like to have a well, the option to have a well at the wash plant, yes. Okay, it would serve two purposes. It would help supplement water for the plant, but it would, we've, we've put wells in, in gravel pits before. I'm actually working on it with Christian Est in Sanford right now, but one reason to have a well is for dust control, so that you can fill up like a water truck on site with some good clean water. It's funny, now in Sanford, we, we don't have a, a well at our gravel pit, so we, we fill up the water trucks at the concrete plant and we have to drive all the way to the, the pit to, you know, do dust control.
Yeah.
But if we had a, a well on site somewhere that we could use for that, it would really help out a lot.
Well, you're gonna have one at the maintenance building.
Is that?
Yeah, cause you, you're gonna have a septic system there.
That's true, yeah, we would have, we would have a well.
We have a well there, which I don't know, is that on the plan?
No, it's not.
No, right.
So any wells you propose should be on there.
Right. I, I would like to think that for the wash plant area, like I would hope that we wouldn't need to use a well because i- if you get some springs in the right spot, then you can get a little, a charge of water that you need. But it might be good to talk to the engineers about that a little bit more and potentially pose having like, you know, maybe it's just like a point. It's not necessarily like a, a well that's bored down 500 feet. It's more of just like a point driven well that's like-
Point well, yeah, 20, 20, 25 feet.
Right, yeah.
Do it around all the lakes.
As far as your machine can reach down a ghetto.
Uh, I was picturing like the, you know, well tiles, like the 30 inch well tiles, you can stack like-
You can drive a point well without digging a hole.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Or maybe you could just, you, you know, alright, well, if you want wells, put them on the plan.
Okay.
And then just the, you know, how much, you, you, the water in the wash plant is recycled, so to speak, correct?
It is.
So, so it's not like you would be needing indefinite amount of water? You just need to fill up the reservoirs enough to circulate?
Exactly, yeah.
Yeah?
Yeah.
In the kitchen, rainwater.
Yeah, the, the ponds would kinda probably be lined with like some silt or some clay to just hold that water, you know, at the pond level.
You're not gonna have an actual-
Liner.
Liner?
No. Question, so isn't your wash plant, you're gonna extract all your minerals, flatten it out? How low are you gonna go? Cause how low will the wash, the ponds be? They're not gonna go under that five foot water table, right?
No, they're supposed to be 10 feet above.
10 feet above, so then how, what is your intentions on your extraction?
10.
Because if you're making ponds, you're not gonna be able to, you, you see what I'm saying? Or where I'm going with that, or no?
The, yeah, you're saying, I think I think you read you.
Well, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, what would your source of water be if it wasn't a well?
Yeah. The, the, so the, the 10 feet thing is not an actual law and or formal rule. It, those ponds could be down to five feet.
My foot of the water.
But we, we propose 10 feet just to be on the safe side. And since it has to be like an internally drained location, I mean, I think that pretty much sets the grade of the entire area at 10 feet. Like, you're not gonna be able, you're not gonna wanna have this area lower and that area higher. I would be perfectly comfortable with that whole area staying 10 feet above, you know, just keeping it at the same grade. And does that answer your question?
Yeah, well, yes, no, cause that, well, so when you have your, your main extri-, your, or your, the wash plant, like the area of the wash plant, but then you're gonna have a, for the pond, you're gonna have a depression, right?
Yeah, 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 right.
So your, your area for the wash plant will be at 20 feet and then your pond will be at 10 feet?
Uh, yeah, you're, I guess you're, you're right, yeah, your wash plant would probably be at like 15 feet and your pond would be at 10 feet, yeah, to be a little bit higher.
You recycle through that, right?
You are.
The pond does, wash and goes back into pond?
My major concern is to make sure that there's another buffer between the, the high, the-
The groundwater.
Yeah, the groundwater and your actual wash pond because-
Yeah.
Um, I know there is, I don't, Acton doesn't have it, but I know there's other towns where lagoons, you're not allowed to make a man-made pond because of it affects the water table.
Well, and just the, the possibility of that silt and sediment infiltrating the groundwater.
Right.
That's why I was asking what kinda liner you're gonna have in the ponds too.
Ooh, true, I, I would think just silt would work well as liner. That's kind of, we have a wash ponds in Sanford and that's what we use. You just, you actually kinda grub the silt out over time because that's what you're creating. When you're washing, you're creating like a silty material. A lot of operators will take that kinda silty material and they use it for reclamation. Um, because just vegetation grows on it very well, actually.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah, um, so I wouldn't, a liner, I wouldn't wanna have a, a rubber liner because I don't wanna go in there with an excavator and rip that thing to shreds and then have to replace it, which is why clay and or silt kinda makes the most sense to me. Uh, concrete could be possible, but then we're, then we gotta worry about taking it out after. You know, with this, when you're done, you can, when the, when the life cycle of this is done, those ponds can just be filled right back in and then you can reclaim right over the top of it, so, yeah.
Alright, well, that is something to think about, the lining of the ponds or thing. And, and where the stormwater's gonna go in that area and the, and the source of the water for the wash plant.
Yes.
In, in St. Germain's response to earlier comments, they say that the ponds are proposed to be lined with clay or other material to retain water from storm events. So I, I think that just-
We should, yeah.
Getting more definitive if it will be clay or if it will be something else.
Okay. I would, I would be inclined to stick with just clay.
So earlier you had said that St. Germain made the responses, that's all the responses from back is in this three-ring binder.
The, the response to Ben's memo is in there?
That's all this. What you were saying, there was like four or five pages of a response and then like 200 and something pages of pictures and-
Yeah, yeah.
That's this three-ring binder.
Yeah, I've got that.
And it was the previous memo, not this one.
Right, yes, correct. That was his initial.
Right, the, the memo we're working off of is dated, um.
Just recently.
August eleventh, and we haven't gotten any kind of formal comments like we got last time.
Okay, that's what I thought. All right, um, anything else on page seven?
I would just say lastly, I, I think that whole, I, I wanna look at it, but we could set that whole area to ten feet above the groundwater table level. Just because you're gonna have the processing area here that we're proposing. Um, and it's, DEP says you only need five feet, but the extra protection in this area wouldn't be an issue at all, you know?
A lot of that already is a lot higher than ten feet, right?
It is, yeah. I think you're, I think you're probably looking at, in that area, fifteen to twenty feet.
Even if you dug a pool, you're not gonna, the bottom of the pool's not gonna be any closer than ten feet.
No, yeah, right.
Okay, page eight. Anything on page eight?
Well, we need to consider, there's been notes, um, fencing around the wash plant, the ponds.
Currently, we're showing a, um, I believe it's a five-foot berm that we were gonna build around the wash plant area. Um, just to make sure that no ATVs come in, um.
How's that gonna work with your stormwater though? Cuz I'm, I'm thinking that the, if the processing area or wash plant area is internally drained, that the water's gonna wanna go into the ponds, but if you've got a berm around them.
It'd have to be a stabilized berm, like you'd.
Well, where would your water go if it wasn't going in there, is what I'm saying.
Berm's gonna be on the outer perimeter of the area, so the water.
Fourteen-point-two acres or whatever?
Yeah.
Oh, is that's what you're proposing?
That's a lot of work. I mean, I'd probably, I'd probably prefer to put it, probably prefer to put it just around the ponds, if that makes sense.
This just to, the berm is just to keep kids out of the ponds, is that the idea of it?
It's a safety precaution. I mean, it's.
I'm not sure that would do it. A kid would just run right over a berm.
I mean, there's ponds on, you walk out on this, if you're walking out on this property, there's ponds and streams and there's a lot of ways you can, you know, walk into a pond. This wouldn't be the only one out there.
Oh, absolutely. No, I'm, 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 that's, my concern is the stormwater particularly and, and how the berm is gonna affect the stormwater drainage in that particular area cuz we're, if we're not getting a DP permit for your stormwater in that region, which it seems like.
Right.
I wanna get some sort of stormwater plan and know what, where that water's gonna go so it doesn't end up in the vernal pools or other natural resources, um, approximate the area.
Yeah, you really can't put a berm up around the pool you're trying to collect rainwater in. A runoff, stormwater.
Kinda.
True.
That doesn't make sense to me.
I don't know if a berm is what we need there.
The berms he's talking about are the entire area, right?
Yeah, we.
We had, I guess we had proposed that as an alternative to a fence cuz a fence would be very expensive. The, and probably a bit unnecessary, but.
Yeah, so the, the section we're referring to is, um, five dot nine. It's on page fifty-three and fifty-four. Uh, that was the one that we just referenced a little bit ago, talking about, um, uh, temporary bill, or buildings, I should say.
Yep.
Um, so performance standard number two is the one that we're picking up on in, in that memo. And it says if any standing water accumulates, the site must be fenced in a manner adequate to keep children out. Uh, so a berm would potentially interfere with stormwater collection, but it'd be adequate for keeping a vehicle from, from going into the pond, but I, it wouldn't be keeping people out. So I, I don't know if what this ordinance envisions is a complete fence around every, or if it's just, uh, trying to keep people out of the site unauthorized.
Kind of treating it like a swimming pool, ground-level swimming pool.
Yeah.
You gotta keep kids out from.
Right, so.
Drowning, basically. If it gets deep enough to where it poses a hazard to kids.
I'm not sure if just posting the property would be enough, though.
No, not, where it poses a problem or a situation where a kid could drown, if you get deep enough.
No, I understand, but like, like the applicant said, there's any number of existing ponds that someone could drown in, in there, and if the whole property was posted, they're not, there's not supposed to be anyone in there anyhow. So, but it is something we need to consider because it's in the ordinance. Do we want a fence or not?
The situation too.
I think the mineral extraction area should be posted with signs, like.
I think it says you're gonna do that.
Yeah, I think, I'm pretty sure it does say that, yeah.
That's like where you're doing your operations.
Right, that's a smart move.
The key's happening, rocks, if you put them, it's painted orange, blah, 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 blah.
Right.
You could put, um, orange boulders around the wa-, the ponds if you wanted to and just like paint them.
You know, that's gonna keep a child out.
Keeps an ATV out.
Find the world when you're a child.
Oh, yeah, that probably attracts.
Probably attract kids, what the hell's that?
Right.
So I, I think it, it'll really be up to you to think about how to meet that standard around. Uh, it says fenced adequate to keep children out. So if, if you are saying that there's other ways that are adequate to keep children out, maybe that would be some kind of waiver request.
Mm-hmm.
But in the meantime, I think that's what, uh, the, the ordinance is pretty clear in that it says fencing. So I don't know. I mean, it's, it's, on one hand, it's like, would some orange snow fence be adequate? Or does it need to be like a twelve-foot high chain link with barbed wire on top, that kind of, like it's.
Control fund?
I think there's, there's some room for you to, to think about how to make that safe.
Those orange fences aren't the worst, the plastic that you roll out.
Snow fences.
Snow, snow fences, that's all.
Like you said, though, you got ATVs, snowmobiles, all kinds of stuff going on, uh, the whole area and ponds.
Right.
Vernal pools that are pretty deep, some of them. You have to step in one of those, I mean.
Well, it doesn't have to be deep either.
Yeah, but it's got this much mud in it.
They got it on every five-gallon bucket.
Right, but these are maybe.
So, little picture of the kid, so.
Well, I think it's coming to play into play.
I don't know. I think that that's something we're gonna have to come back to, the fencing and the. I personally don't feel like that's, that we should require fencing around this thing, but.
Not the whole site.
No, but I would like to see.
Maybe around the ponds.
Yes, yeah. Some, some way, you know, something that's adequate to keep children out is, is.
Any, any water collection, it's usually fenced one way or another.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe just around the ponds, I would say.
Just a pond, that's all I would say, is just a pond area.
Well, that too.
It's a deterrent. Doesn't mean they're gonna climb over it, not climb over it, anything else, but if the fence is up there, you meet the standards.
Yeah, or.
You did what you could.
Yeah, yeah. That's the best you can do.
No use to do.
And maybe, like Pat said, hazardous areas like the fueling area, fence it so no one's stealing the fuel, too.
Yeah, that's a smart move.
Well, I'm assuming that'll be locked.
Yeah.
Anyway, um.
The tank would be locked, yeah.
Well, you're gonna have a gate on the whole property, too.
There's a gate at the entrance, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah.
So, all right.
If you wanna steal fuel, you can carry a five-gallon pails down the road.
It's a long walk.
Yeah.
You're only gonna keep the people out that don't wanna go in. The ones that wanna go in are gonna get in.
Right. Don't make it easy for them.
Well, and they're also allowing public access through the site on the trails.
Right.
So maybe we should have something that, you know, if you can post the sides of the trails so people don't, you know, scoot in the trail and then.
Go onto one of those log, skidder trails.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, uh, yeah, there won't be any trails near that area, which is good.
Well, there is this trail right.
Yeah.
In the lower left of that region, and if the wash plant area has moved away from the vernal pools, it might be close to that trail. And there's also a trail right to the north of it, right there, and the road itself.
We're, yeah, we're, so we're proposing for, that's a snowmobile trail, and we're proposing rerouting that trail so that it just comes up to, uh, Redgate Road. And then the snowmobilers come down Redgate and then they come down again through our property like. H Road, sorry.
Parallel H Road.
Yeah, yeah. Um, so the, the snowmobiles will still have the same access to the same trail systems, but they'll be kind of going around the active operation. Um, that was our thought. It, it doesn't change the access in any way, but it just.
I'd be like to see that. I don't, I don't think it's a good idea to have people going through here.
Right.
Or maybe, maybe not just the property line needs to be posted, but also the si-, the sides of the trails that cross through the, through the property.
The, we're, we're hoping not to have any trails in extraction areas, so they'd be going around.
So.
Check, I guess there would be.
Just for clarity.
Yeah.
This trail here is, is gonna be gone, or?
That trail, yeah, that trail would be gone.
And then this trail is still existing?
That trail's gonna stay, yeah.
So, so I'm saying along this side of the trail, post it here.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
As well as the property line.
Actually, yeah, that does make sense.
You know, just to, I.
And definitely have some signage of some kind when you're coming from the trail and you're gonna be crossing the, um, access road, you know?
Yeah.
A stop sign or.
Absolutely.
Yeah, would be a great, yeah.
Yeah. All right. Anything else on page eight? Um, I see evidence of insurance. I don't know if we've received that yet. It's on the list. Um, page nine.
Do we, um, before you move on?
Yeah.
Um, just to be, I'm concerned with consistency. Have we allowed operations till two on Saturdays?
On the hours?
Noon time.
Noon time?
Noon time, um.
Not on the most recent one.
What's that?
I don't think, what's we do?
I, I.
I can't.
That's why I was asking. I don't remember, but I thought it was noon.
On Saturday?
I think it's noon time on Saturday and operations don't start till seven.
But then we also don't let them off free hauling anything out on Saturdays between Memorial to Labor Day, right?
Huh? There's no crushing?
And no hauling on Saturdays from Memorial Day to Labor Day, I believe.
I'd have to look into it again, but, uh, I know, I know there's no crushing during those times.
Well, until we get a consistent.
For which?
Consistent thing in the ordinance that gives the times that the, we, hard to make it consistent right now cuz we don't have anything that's, that says they have to stop at noon on Saturday.
Well, at least when we give a conditional use permit, we could be consistent with each person that we give.
Right, that's.
That to.
Well, would you be willing to end at noon on Saturdays, or?
I don't have a problem with that. That's fine.
It's an easy fix.
Fight it. Yeah.
The other thing would be hauling on Saturdays. We didn't allow stuff. So on.
But there are other pits that are hauling on Saturdays right now.
But they haven't, yeah, but they're older pits that.
Already have existing conditions.
Right. Where Seth wasn't existing, reset the conditions and to be consistent.
We shouldn't be comparing him to other applicants.
Well, no, but, right.
Well, that's unfair for business, too, to have one stand for this business and one for that. If that's what's been going on and we haven't fixed that with everybody, then I don't see how we can impose it on anybody.
Well, we can fix it going forward by being consistent, that's why.
But we also need to go back.
It's fine, it's not money, money.
Exactly.
Well, we can't go back.
Other operations.
Can't.
No.
We can't go back. All right, we'll have to look at that.
Right.
But you're, you're willing to stop at noon anyway?
Yeah.
Saturday?
We're talking for hauling, twelve o'clock. Just, uh, for just operations.
Operations.
All operations?
Yeah, that's fine, yeah.
Okay. Uh, so now, page nine?
Let me see about the blasting.
No blasting proposed with the operation.
Right, but if you look in their operation manual, it was to be considered somewhere else at later time.
It said at this time, but they've said no place blasting a couple of times.
Right, but then.
I think we made a re.
Yeah, one day we did, like, it could be potentially.
They said at this time, no blasting.
If they're not getting approved for another, and they want it, they have to come back for, for conditional use, for expansion of use.
Okay.
Are you, are you aware of this, uh, historic homestead that's cited in this memo?
I am not. And I did ask Kyle to look into this.
Ben, where, where on the, um, map approximately are we, uh, I know it says below the six-hundred-and-forty-foot contour line, but that's really, where on the map is it about?
There's, there's two things. One is, uh, prehistoric, which is below the six-hundred-and-forty-foot contour, uh, meaning Native American, pre-colonial. Uh, they're not known, um, but they're saying that there should be a survey to see if there are any, um, prehistoric archaeological, uh, resources present on the site. The other part of that was a historic site, uh, historic homestead of T. Smith on Grant Road, which I think was the name of H Road a long time ago.
Okay, so it's somewhere along H Road.
Right.
Which it's, it's likely that that wouldn't even be within their, it would probably be within that hundred-foot road buffer, I would think. Well, most.
Right on the road.
Homesteads are right on the road. But maybe the road's in a different location, I don't know.
Yeah.
They didn't even like to shovel snow back then.
Horses didn't like to walk through it that far.
Right.
Well, I guess it's something to look into.
Yes, I can, we'll circle back on that.
And, and that letter's the very last page of the.
Right. Is that, try, or fee zero want survey been scheduled, Matt, do you know?
I do not know, off the top of my head, yeah.
So that's, it's like we covered the memo.
Did you guys put a timing date on the sidewalk?
No, we didn't.
No? Do you want to, um.
Do it on the twenty-four.
Finish discussion for tonight?
Yeah.
Or do you wanna move on to discussing the map or the operations manual?
I think we need to get some other people in here, too.
Yeah, we'll have to.
We got half the people on the agenda.
Well, we put him first on the agenda, he maybe should've been last.
Yeah, well, I didn't realize that it was gonna be in.
And I will say that my comments drew from the entirety of this mission, including the operations manual. There may be additional things that you wanna.
I do, I have, yeah, I have it page by page. But I had to go over it next time, I guess. It's fine, we'll do the operations manual next time, it's fine with me.
I think it'd be good to have some of his consultants here because they can answer some of these questions a little bit better.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to take the opportunity to have Ben here to.
Yeah.
To at least go.
We'll have them back, we'll have them back when we know, when we have, um, I actually thought that he was bringing one of his engineers, um, tonight, but, um, when we can have it, make sure that we have everything in line, um, where he brings his consultant and then Ben will be here.
Yeah, to, a lot of the stuff they have to research and come back to us anyways, I don't, it's not.
Well, should we just put the map up and, uh, talk about the sidewalk and what should be flagged and that sort of thing?
Yeah, I think we, we, we'll save the operations manual for another time. We should, there's further discussion on the map and, and the sidewalk itself and the future sidewalk.
Do you wanna deal with this?
Do you wanna deal with this map or you want me to go to...
I think, um, the one that's, um, C-105 is a pretty good one for the, um, what's it called? Non-extraction areas. That one shows a lot of, of the sidewalk area.
You just went by it.
Yeah, you gotta go up too. Up one more, right there. Is that it?
Oops, sorry. I don't have my mouse on me right now.
105, C-105, there it is. Maybe that's the one we already had up there.
No, it's just, uh, smaller. The other one had, it was the whole site blown up. This one's concentrating more on what we just walked.
Right, exactly. Except for the lower left.
Yeah, that's...
Correct. But, um, it covers 90% of what we walked. And we are, we did, we did talk a lot about the wash plant area, the, the two vernal pools, the buffers, the, the, um, location of everything up there. You know, how the whole area, the 14.6 areas is gonna, you know, how that whole area's gonna be treated.
The area towards H Road you're talking about?
The, um, non-extraction areas, the
Oh.
14.6 acres.
Oh, yes, yes, yep. We looked at that pretty thoroughly. We saw where the aquifer protection district was flagged. Um, we walked that vernal pool buffer, I thought, pretty well. We walked the access road, which was that logging road that we were on. Yep. Um...
Where is the culvert?
The stream crossing is up towards West Shore Drive. Um, it would be like if you walked past that wash plant area towards West Shore Drive, yep, and then bared right, right there. Remember we got to the, kind of the opening right there? There was that opening and some of us continued to walk straight all the way to West Shore Drive.
Oh, okay, yes.
You and I.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, yeah, you, yeah, we, we all, we walked, we came to that opening and we went straight and we walked down that hill to West Shore Drive. The dirt bikes were there, yep. Well, if we were at that opening, instead we bared right, we would head towards where the, um, stream crossing is. But you know, you guys wanted to go, definitely see that the next time around. Yeah.
Well, we have, the extraction area number one is like one area we need to see and then extraction number two and three, where that stream crossing is, is kind of another region. We haven't seen either, any of the extraction areas yet.
We were in, no, we were in two of them. We were in towards West Shore Drive, we were in extraction area two, like a good part of it.
Right, where the cleared area was.
Right. And then we, at the end of the day, we went to, um, H Road and looked at extraction area number one.
Well, the very top of it.
Yeah, we didn't get down.
We didn't.
We didn't keep going, yep. So, that's right.
Yeah, there's interest in the, in the, uh, you know, the buffers down there and the, uh, right away.
Right.
For the easement. The right away access.
Yes, but the, I don't...
We didn't look at that.
Right.
So it's kinda like two regions that we still need to look at, is in my mind.
Yeah. Yeah, I see it that way too. Yeah. I can flag the vernal pools in the area near the H Road, the buffers for those, if you want.
Yeah.
And, and the buffer of the extraction area there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That would be good.
Okay. That makes sense. The stream doesn't, I mean, I can show you, we can see the bridge easily enough. I don't think, we need to like survey that out. Um...
See it.
Yeah.
There is the, in extraction area number three, there is the one pool, like, considered non-significant vernal pool entirely within the stra, extraction area.
Which one? Sorry?
Extraction area number three.
Three, yeah.
South of the bridge.
Yep.
There's the one pool. It's, it's not considered significant.
Yeah.
Entirely within the extraction area.
We can look at that on the ground. It's like visible enough. It's, um, it's, it's very clear where you're on the site, where that is. Um, it kinda drops down into a little depression right there.
Yeah.
Small pond. Yeah.
That's just kind of an odd area because you're gonna have the side slopes of your pit are gonna be like this, but then once you get in there, it slopes down into the pool.
Right.
It looks almost like the top of a volcano when you're done. It's kind of a weird detail.
Yeah, or it might not be as dramatic as you think. It might be like a 10-foot berm around the pond, sort of, you know?
Right. Well, there's an area of interest in there.
Yeah, we should, yeah. We should definitely walk there.
It's probably flagged out anyway, right?
It is. The wet, yeah, it would've been flagged as part of the wetland thing. Yeah.
So which, which side do we wanna do next? I guess was kinda my question. Or should we try to do both of them in one day?
Well, depends. Bevins be bringing his Jeep to put us in the back, take us from one side to the other.
I can do that.
You could start on the H Road and walk that and then you could get in your cars and drive, if you wanted to, you could drive around West Shore Drive.
Yeah.
That would make more sense. We could do two in one day.
Wanted to get it done on the 10th?
Yeah.
Be done.
Um, get it done on September 10th?
I thought it was the 24th you said.
Yeah, it was the 24th. That was the date that Rodney would be able to make it. Um...
Their last time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I think I have some kinda commitment. The 10th. I won't be around on the 10th myself. Yeah.
Never?
I won't be around on the 20th. I was just trying to get him to pull it next.
He needs time to get everything.
Yeah. I agree. I think the 24th works.
Nine o'clock again?
Sure.
I won't be here. I'm leaving on 23rd for extended vacation.
For a month?
Almost, yeah. Going out of Florida.
Prison?
Yeah.
Saturday.
Got a summit.
Saturday.
National summit to get to. Yeah. Yeah, I gotta, gotta go Dubai tied.
Right.
09:00? Nine o'clock?
Yeah.
Twenty-four?
I was gonna go earlier.
Do you want Kyle to come too, or just Rodney, or?
Kyle is the one last, last time. And Rodney's the wetland.
Yeah, Rodney's more the... I'll see if they're both available. How about that?
Yeah, I mean, it was definitely helpful to have
Right.
One of them with us.
Kyle was helpful.
Yes.
Yep. Rodney would be too.
And then, um, couple of other things from the sidewalk that, um, we still, that are still kinda up in the air that need to be discussed are the the road going through the resource protection buffer, approximate the building there on the right-hand side.
Mm-hmm.
And also below the screen, um, anywhere where the road goes through the resource protection buffer there. It looks like, from what we can see on, on this map, there's some room to move it to the left toward the building in that particular location. So that's something that the board needs to, uh, consider. Because, um...
True.
If, if there's any reasonable alternative, then they're not supposed to put a road in the RP. Which it looks like they could move it over in that region. The regions to the south of the screen is more difficult, but the, what we see on the screen here, looks like it could be moved toward the building. There is a wetland right, uh, yes.
Yeah.
That's what I'm referring to. And it looks like there is a wetland that's there to the left of the road, so this, this thing right here. So I was thinking maybe if the road went more like this, you could get a couple hundred feet out of the resource protection district there. I know it's an existing road, but it's still gonna need a lot to get, to, to put that thing up to, uh, truck standard.
Right, yeah, but it looks like there is a wetland that's fairly close.
Right.
You're not gonna wanna try that.
But if you see where the building is there?
Yeah.
That, about half of that road could be pushed to the left of the screen.
Yeah, it could be pushed over. I, I agree with that.
Into the building envelope, even if, maybe even the building could slide to the left a little bit more too to accommodate that.
Yeah. Yeah. I don't see that being a problem.
Cause I'd like to see much of that road removed from the resource protection area as possible.
Oh, you started at the entrance and just straightened it out.
Right.
That way.
Yeah, I mean, it would basically be just hugging that 100-foot line, pretty much.
What's the topography right there? What's the elevation to the left? Does it drop right off?
I think it does, I think it does go down toward that other wetland where the road is probably situated on the highest part of the area. So that would wanna be taken into account.
I think it could be hard to move the road personally. I mean, a map is easy.
Well, yeah, but they're gonna put a whole building down there, so you could definitely move it over in that region.
To the left?
Mm-hmm. Cause if you look at it's, um... Roads and driveways in the Shoreland Resource Protection District.
Did I come to any planning board meetings before the 24th?
Yeah, no, I agree with that.
Continue to work on any of this, or?
See if I can find that. Roads and driveways in Shoreland District.
The...
Page 50, it's the last.
What was the page 50?
I think it's gonna be page, it's page 51. We need to update our index. But we have to take it to town meeting to do it. Yeah, page 51.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
From, from my perspective, I, I think it, when we think about scheduling future meetings, it's probably, and I, sorry if this is a side conversation, right, yeah. It, it probably makes sense to work with the applicant team to try and address as many of these things as possible in one, uh, go-around rather than coming back for multiple meetings to kinda nibble away at this long list that we've generated this evening. So that, that'd be my advice. It'd probably save your consulting team some time, save you some evenings and just kind of like just, uh, put together a more comprehensive response that would deal with a lot of these as opposed to coming back week after week for the next couple of months.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be, I'd be willing to go through the operations manual now too. I'm prepared to do it. But I don't, I feel like that's gonna be pushing the timeframe of the meeting tonight. But, um, just to...
I was just saying, Gavin, I can come to the next meeting and go over the operations manual if you wanna do that.
Yeah, no, I think we should.
Yeah.
But, um, and we can wrap up if you want. I just wanted to point out, um, page 51, roads and driveways in the Shoreland District D. New roads and driveways are prohibited in a resource protection district except that the planning board may grant a permit to provide a permitted uses, access to permitted uses within the district. A road or driveway may also be approved by the planning board in a resource protection district upon finding that there is no other reasonable alternative route or location outside the district. And, um, that's kinda what I was referring to with these, these roads here. And just, we need to get as much of that roadway out of the RP as we can.
I agree.
Okay.
Yeah.
Alright.
So maybe loosely, like, if I come to the next meeting and we talk about the operations manual, I could try to bring the engineers with me. I'm taking a lot of great notes here. Um, we can start making revisions based on these notes ASAP. Um, then after the sidewalk, we do kinda what Ben's talking about and that's when we, you guys have newly submitted plans based on everything I'm gathering from this meeting and from the next meeting. And then we have, really can have a roundtable where
Yeah.
we're in more solid shape.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, cause you can get us an updated operations manual.
Right.
And that we can review that and see.
All that can be resubmitted
Exactly.
Before we put everybody here together.
Yeah.
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 And just as a, a best practice, I know there's something we've talked about here before is it, it makes a lot of sense to have a, a clear objective, you know, a good re, why are you coming? It's for the board to make these decisions or for you to get certain steps in the process squared away. So I think that a reasonable next step for the next formal meeting, maybe there's a meeting to talk about the operations manual in between, but I, I think getting that full submission, making a determination of completeness and, and aiming for scheduling a public hearing seems to be the next step in the process. So whether that happens, you know, it, it's really at the applicant, however, you know, uh, efficient your team is at pulling the new information together. I think it's, the ball would be in your court at that point. Uh, but whenever that is, if it's four weeks or four months from now, that the, that, that's what I would be looking for the board to do is be prepared to, um, find the application, whether it's complete or not, um, and then schedule a public hearing if it is.
I'm hoping after, you know, this, this meeting and the next meeting, that I can submit everything and you guys will find it complete. Whether that happens or not, I guess we'll find out.
Right.
Yeah. So we're gonna skip him on for the 15th or the 14th, 15th?
Oh, I just had it up.
Um, just to come in and review the operations manual, so that he can go back?
Yeah.
Um, and are we asking Ben to come back for that one, or is that something that you guys? Yes? Ben, are you available?
I am looking right now. Yep, I can pencil that in. 15th.
I'll have some disc, I'm not gonna put them first in case this happens again. Um, so...
Oh, come on.
I'll have some discussion with you and so you don't have to show up at 6:00 and let you know what's on the agenda. Put Joe Stanley first.
Done with that?
Thanks a lot, everybody. Appreciate it. Was, was this your map?
Uh, I think he has.
Uh, you didn't get, have to... I was thinking about you giving that.
Is it yours?
Just, just so we, uh, are on the same page, we, we have these other two manuals too, the, um, groundwater monitoring and the spore returning counter. We need to review both of those before we, um, get the revised plan and it's entirely before we can move forward thoroughly.
Next meeting we'll deal with operation and we'll have to add another meeting for those two.
I guess so, cause I don't, it depends.
Yeah, we could, we could list them and then if we get to them, we get to them. Definitely get through the opposite plane.
I think it's gonna take a while.
Thank you for that.
Alright.
Yeah, I agree.
It's, it's gonna be simi, similar or more than what we're telling you.
So... Joe, you're missing a button.
I miss it all.
Even it out, even it out.
Don't even bother. Yeah.
Thanks, Ben. Appreciate it.
Great.
Uh, we haven't actually had to do that before.
What's that?
Jesus.
It's tomorrow on the agenda.
Uh, this was a public hearing, yeah.
How do you wanna run it now then?
Oh, I didn't put it on there, huh?
Right, that's what's throwing me off.
No, I...
Working all day.
Sorry.
It was advertised. It was advertised in the hallway, on the paper. It was everywhere. So I just, I just didn't put it on the agenda.
Right.
Alright, so Joe Stanley.
Yeah, Joe Stanley, West Shore Drive, West Shore Drive. Yeah, Joe Stanley, Westshore Drive, Westshore Drive Map one twenty-eight, lot zero zero seven dash zero zero one, application for subdivision preliminary plan, and it's.
It's a public hearing.
Public hearing. This is a public hearing.
I didn't put the public, I didn't put it on the actual agenda.
We wanted to get the, the, and I, I don't think we were.
Oh, you guys had me scheduled last, last time we were here. It's.
We did see the advertisements. It was on.
Okay.
It was on the website and actually, three of the members of the audience tonight, uh, Mr. Jason Roy and then the McPherson family, um, the three people you saw sitting over there were here for the public hearing. I just didn't know how long it was gonna go. I slipped them a note and said, if there's any simple questions you want, I'll help you, I'll answer them out there. Or if you wanna wait for the meeting, you can. And I answered the couple of questions they had. One of them was just curious and one of them had a, one of them had a camp around the corner just past the Danwait property that you see up there. And they were mostly asking like, if the people were gonna have rights to go in that direction. And I explained any needed rights would have to go out to Westshore Drive, so. There were two members of the public here, but we just, um, again, I told them they could wait, but they, they were pretty simple questions that they had and they wanted to see the map and I did just, just show them out there. Again, that was Jason Roy and McPherson.
Seems like we should have another hearing at the final plan.
Yeah, no, you, I, you, I was told to schedule the public hearing last time.
No, that's fine, but this is just preliminary.
Yeah.
So we can have another one at the final plan to, to cover the public because, you know, we.
Yeah.
But you should probably open the public hearing and close it so that we do.
I think we opened it. It's open now. That's why Joe was talking about the, uh, the public that was here. Do you wanna close it now? Close the public hearings for, uh, Westshore acres.
Do it again for the final.
Yeah. And we'll do, do another one.
We'll schedule it tonight, probably.
Right. You wanna open it for discussion from, about that last piece now?
Yeah.
For us? You, did you print, you got, talked to legal about that piece, right?
Yeah, what, what all happened with that? Did we get a?
Give me a second. I have it. It's, so I, I reached out to, uh, the town, town rep attorney, um, and his response, he didn't actually, uh, reference this actual statute. He said, there is no problem with that proposed subdivision. It is a three-lot subdivision which consists of lot one, lot one, two acres, lot two, two acres, and lot three being all of the remaining land, fourteen point two nine acres. The planning board, the planning board can't deny a subdivision application simply because they don't like the configuration of the remaining land. That's pretty, it's.
Alright, well, I wanna, I wanna see where it is in the statute.
Yeah, I still got a problem with that because.
I, I, I think it, it might be fine, but
Yeah.
where does it legally say that? That's.
Well, it's probably not going to, you know, these are state statutes voted on by the legislature. It's probably not going to specifically address this one particular item. There's probably not gonna be a line item in there that says.
Well, there's probably one, there's probably a line item that encapsulates things like this as well as other things similar to it.
Yeah, yeah, and I mean.
Get a reference to that.
What you're gonna end up getting is a, a verbatim definition of subdivision, half or most of which is, is already defined in your ordinance, um, two, three, four pieces. So I'm not su-, um, so I'm not sure what else can be provided.
Well, I guess you could just add that on as a lot and make it a, you know, do, do the, do your, uh, test pits and.
I mean, we can. It, it seems like a pointless act. Uh, you know, we're creating a lot that my client doesn't want. You guys want it, but if that's the direction we have to go to get through this, then that's
I mean.
fine. Again, you're.
Yeah, the response is not sufficient to.
What you're looking for, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanna see where it legally says you can do it like that.
Okay, so.
That the remaining land does not.
Yeah, me as a land surveying consultant has spoken that my experience is it's okay. Now you have the town's own land use attorney that says it's okay, but that, that stuff still isn't sufficient.
Well, it's because we go by legal documents and.
Right, and, and the person who gives you advice, the town attorney, has, who's familiar with your documents, has now said that, has reaffirmed that it's okay, um.
He said it's okay, but he didn't reference a, a document. And that's what, that's kind of what I was looking for to begin with.
Okay, well, we could, I could bring in a printout of the state definition of a subdivision, but it, it will not clearly address this. It's, it's.
Yeah, well, that's. We could either do that or we could just create that as another law. It's already two acres with two hundred and fifty feet of road front. It's designed as a law.
Okay.
And it's completely separated from the other piece of land. So I, that's where I have a problem with, because it does create another lot in and of itself. And I'm sorry.
Legally, it's not interpreted that way. Both pieces are encapsulated in the same deed. If you wanted to say, who owns that lot right now? It's Scott Matthews because of such and such a deed. Just because there's two portions of it that are no longer touching, it's still owned by the same document. You know, and if we go creating a lot we don't want, for starters, it, it is going to raise their taxes on the property because now they're gonna be taxed on two buildable lots there instead of one. And it's all going to be a function of, you know, people not trusting me, not trusting the town attorney now. You know, and I don't think they should have to pay taxes on that lot for starters if, if they didn't wanna create it as a separate law, um.
Title thirty A. Municipalities and counties, um, reference four four zero one. Uh, if you want to cite which statute it is under the law, that's where we'll find it, and it's quite lengthy. Um, and it's definitions of divisions, um, of the land and transfer.
What was that reference?
Thirty A. It was title thirty A.
Thirty A.
Well, Joe, maybe you can print that out and underline in there where it is that it, um, where it is that pertains to this sort of case.
Yep, I'll, I will do my best to read through those definitions and, and, you know, highlight the parts that I believe apply to this situation.
So, I just want to read a definition for tract or parcel of land, and it may have something to do with it, it may not.
Yep, definitely does.
Just jumping out at me. So tract or parcel of land means all contiguous land in the same ownership except the land is located on opposite sides of a public or private road that are considered each a separate tract or parcel of land unless the road was established by the owner of the land on both sides of the road after. So it's talking about a road separating, but it's also talking about contiguous land in the same ownership. Contiguous?
Yeah, and the, the resulting, if, if, um, lot two had a new owner, um, the land would no longer be contiguous. And that's, that's kind of where we're.
What is the definition of contiguous? Oh, I don't have to leave this page, please.
If you took a ten-foot section of that lot that goes like this, and made it part of the big lot and that of the lot, it'd be continuous. Because they connect.
I, I mean, in, in reference to what contiguous in terms of this statute?
Sharing a common border, touching.
Touching.
The forty-eight contiguous states.
Right. I don't, no, I, I'm totally in agreement with that.
So, so that's the question. If you can just clarify that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the complete reference?
Oh, there's, there's so much here and what, and what Joe was talking about is probably in here too, but that's just the definition.
What was it again?
Like thirty A something, something.
Um.
Title thirty A.
You Google main state statute, um, subdividing land or subdivision, you will be routed to title thirty A. There's just chapters in part two and chapter one eighty-seven, planning and land use regulation.
That's just the reference I need to research it.
Yeah, and then definition is four four oh one.
I'll get my own definition on my explanation.
But it's, it's basically like thirty A, title thirty A.
Not that I disbelieve the lawyer and stuff, but I'd like to read it.
No, well, we asked in the last.
We need to have.
It's not that we don't believe the lawyer or anything. We just need something as, as members of the board to, to decide.
Doing my job as executive secretary requires me to make sure we're following the correct titles and laws and regulations that are provided by the state or the town, county. So I will get that.
Alright, well, let's get another public hearing scheduled for.
And what's the reason for needing another public hearing? These people did receive their letters being notified about tonight. Public did have the opportunity to come tonight. What's, what's the need for a second public hearing? Just so I'm aware.
Um, just for the final plan because we don't, it's not finalized. Share the public the final plan.
Okay, it's not customary in my experiences to, to do the two of them, but that's.
Subdivision regulations.
So, uh, above and beyond, above and beyond the question that the town attorney has answered, is the rest of my application, preliminary application complete? Are we moving on to final now?
Did you update that letter?
Yes, I did give Jason a copy of that letter.
What are we talking about?
The one, yeah.
Oh, he just gave, I just got it.
The letter that authorizes you to be the representative.
Yeah.
Yeah. No, I don't really, I personally don't see anything that's gonna hold us back.
Okay, so, subject to us getting comfortable with that state subdivision thing above and beyond, um, Ms. Dunkowski's response, um, can I proceed to present a final plan at the next meeting? Are we all comfortable with that? You know, there won't be any changes versus this plan, but, um.
Right, and it's gonna look just like that.
Yeah.
I think that would be alright.
When's the next meeting?
Uh.
I gotta, if it's, is this another public hearing or just another meeting for the final plan and then a public hearing?
Public hearing.
We can do either one.
Cause I gotta get the letters out.
We can clear it up. Get, you know, find the verbiage and clear it up, and then we can schedule a hearing after that, or we can schedule a hearing now. I would do either one.
Can we do anything by email?
Huh?
Can we do anything by email?
What do you mean by that?
Um, if you find out, um, if Joe provides some documentation with regard to this, uh, defining the statute and where he finds it. It's pretty cut and dried.
I can email it to you guys.
Couldn't you email it to us?
But that's all, that, that's all that can be done is just, you can receive the documentation, but no, no communication.
They cannot make any decisions.
No communication about that document.
Allow us to move forward.
Uh, you give you a chance to read it and look at it yourself, yeah. There's nothing wrong with exchanging stuff that's already public information anyways, all these things.
I didn't know if it would help expedite things. It would certainly change what would be on the agenda.
We can definitely make another attempt at that. They, you know, again, the part I'm struggling with a little bit is Jason having to send out, and we just acknowledged that the plan wasn't going to change from preliminary to final, yet we're still finding the need to invite the public and to look at a plan that's not going to change.
Well, it's not gonna change between now and the next meeting, but we, I still need that documentation to tell us that this is.
Absolutely.
And so if you get documentation and it's, can't do it like that, it's gonna become another law. The plan is gonna change somewhat, not significantly, but it will change. So.
Well, yeah, I mean, the town attorney's already confirmed it's not going to need any change. I just have to better.
The town attorney didn't give us a legal reference.
I will, that's just, let me finish my sentence. I will provide, I would make an attempt, as I said, to provide better documentation of that.
You said there was a case in Sanford. You just did this a few years ago and you were gonna bring that in and show us how that one.
Well, it's slightly different. Again, it wasn't.
Well.
I will become, I'm trying not to become argumentative about it. Again, we did what we had all agreed on at the last meeting. The town's attorney reviewed it, said it's a legal division. I get that you guys are still uncomfortable with it, and I will try to explain that better, you know, but to me, the public hearing is a separate issue. Um, and again, partly just, this man's got way too much on his plate and I, I just feel like grabbing except the public hearing for little to no reason. If the plan isn't changing between tonight and that meeting, but if that's what everybody feels the need to do, fine.
I think the issue is, is for the public. Was it scheduled for at six? The public hearing?
Well, all meetings are scheduled for six. You don't tell someone to come at seven thirty.
No, no, but don't we always say the public hearing is at six?
Right.
Yeah, I knew, that was my.
Right, so.
Yes.
I, I appreciate you talking to them, Joe, but they should have the opportunity at a public hearing if, to ask whatever they want.
Yeah, and they were welcome to stay, and I did explain that to them. They just, they felt like I answered their questions sufficiently.
The issue is it should have been at six is what you're saying.
I overlooked that on the agenda.
Oh, yeah.
No, I didn't, didn't say, it didn't actually say public hearing, but it was posted everywhere and they got things. I just forgot to put the public hearing on the agenda.
I think we're gonna need another one.
Schedule for the next meeting? When?
I need time to, to get notices out. Let's schedule it at half the next meeting when we get the documentation we need.
And drag this simple division out for six months. Ah, okay.
Alright.
Alright.
We still have to run through this.
Oh, no, no.
That's what we gotta do for the next meeting.
Alright, uh, let's keep.
The subdivision.
Camp Eastshore Drive, Eastshore Drive LLC, fourteen Eastshore Drive, lot one four seven dash zero four eight, application for conditional use for Camp.
Keeta.
Get it?
I sent you.
Okay.
No, it's the same as the last. The last one. I know. Just to get along with taxes on a separate law. That's what I'm saying. That's what he said.
Somebody make you guys wait so long.
What's that?
Yeah.
Good evening. Craig Burdis with Sebago Technics. Tonight, representing Camp Keeta. Sidney and Isaiah are here with me tonight from Camp Keeta. This is a great project. It's at the former Camp Nutter site. We met with the board, I think now, must've been three, four months ago. And since that meeting, not a whole lot has changed from what we were originally proposing. So, project's still proposing, staff cabins, bunk cabins for campers, program cabins. Um, three of the buildings on the site will be renovated for, to, to, to serve this camp. We did listen to the board's comments, and I think, um, you had mentioned you wanted to see the turnaround area which included most of the pavement, the new pavement on the site. We did move that outside the limits of the shoreline zone. There is still a piece of pavement, the main, the main entry area, right here. That's still located in the shoreline zone, but we had to put it there for site distance. So there was a traffic memo that was submitted as part of the application that showed that that area does meet the site distance requirements. So that, that's why it was important to keep the entry at that location. Unfortunately, we had to like curve it around to get back to that turnaround outside the shoreline zone. When we went through the whole storm on that analysis, we found that that area, because it's A soils, which are used to absorb in that runoff, and the creation of that pavement was causing the runoff to be a little bit higher. So we had to design a detention pond to slow down the runoff. So you'll see that the detention pond's part of the plan set. And what that detention pond. And what that detention pond does is it's really just like 18 inches of sand. It will be lined to protect the groundwater, and it's going to, it's going to cause the runoff to be slowly released back to Loom Pond. So it will be lined so that the runoff doesn't seep through the soils, into the soils and into the groundwater aquafore. The first submission that we made on this, I think a month and a half ago, we had to go back and change the design because that detention pond was too close to the well. So by state standards, the detention pond has to at least be 100 feet from that well. So that's why we had to go back and redesign it and re-submit plans, is we had to move that detention pond a little bit further from the well system. When I met with the board at a sketch level, we had discussed an engineered wastewater system. We did not end up going with a engineered wastewater system because we didn't feel that that was the best solution here. Instead, we went with three separate systems that all serve less than 2,000 gallons per day. We tried to slightly oversize those systems because up by the cabins in this area, it's completely, it's difficult to predict exactly how many people it will serve, so we tried to be a little bit conservative with the numbers to assume if some campers went over and used the other bathhouse, bathroom area, that wastewater system would be able to accommodate some of that extra flow. As well as the wastewater system that's serving the main, main area over there, the dining hall, we assumed that, we assumed almost like worst-case scenario for that disposal system. And the reason why the three disposal systems work better for this site is because it reduced the amount of overall excavation, the amount of sewer pipe that would be needed to get all of the flow to one central area. Also, like pump systems would be needed to get the flow from like some of the program cabins on this side to one central disposal system. So we went with the three disposal systems, just to try to keep it a little bit more simple. There was plenty of room on the site for the system, so it worked out pretty well. The site will utilize the existing wellhouse. There was some due diligence before Sebago Technics became involved on that wellhouse that looked at the well, the water quality of that well, and that was included in the application as well. The geologists at Sebago Technics took all that data and put together a memo to support the using that well, to continue using that well, and why it doesn't meet the requirements of a public water supply. After some further research, we found that for it to be a public water supply, it has to serve more than, has to serve more than 25, I think 25 people over a 60-day period or something like that, or for 60 days or more. Well, this camp is only going to be really occupied at full capacity for, I believe, three weeks, three weeks during the summer. And then, from there on out, it's going to be used very sporadically throughout the year. The Boy Scouts may continue to use it. So it will not, it will not meet that public water supply requirement. So we didn't go down that road to classify this as a public water supply at this time. In the future, if this camp ever were to operate for more than, I believe, it's like, it would have to be used quite substantially more than what's proposed as part of this No DEP permit is required, and when I say DEP permit, stormwater law or site law, so because we're not creating more than an acre of new impervious, we will have to submit a permit by rule because that detention pond has an outlet pipe. It's just a four-inch pipe that will discharge, I think like 30 feet away from Loom Pond. So we do have to unfortunately submit a permit by rule for that, and as the board's aware, that's just a 14-day turnaround. When we went into this project, we thought that it would possibly trigger stormwater law, so a higher level of treatment and detention, but in fact, we're trying to minimize the disturbance to the greatest extent here. The camp will utilize all the existing paths. We're reutilizing three of the existing buildings. So we're really trying to minimize the overall disturbance here, and it will not create more than one acre of new impervious. New impervious being all the new cabins and some of the new trails. There's actually only one new trail that's being created, and that's this trail that goes from the dining hall up to the bunk houses. And the only reason why we're cutting in that trail is just for ADA accessibility. We felt that it was important to provide ADA accessibility between the bunk houses and then the dining hall, as well as an ADA path. This path will be paved right here. That will all be ADA accessible. So I hope that the board found the application complete, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thanks.
So the detention pond is in the shoreline zone?
Yeah.
Can you bring it up up there?
No, I can't. I already, I didn't have that planned. So the detention pond, we tried to minimize, I guess that's a question for the board. The runoff is going to Loom Pond, and by the standards, you have to slow the runoff down unless it goes to a great pond. Loom Pond is not identified as a great pond, so we're trying to slow the runoff down going to a watershed that's not defined as a great pond. However, if the water were to just go straight to Loom Pond, in my opinion, it's not going to really create any issues because sometimes slowing the runoff down to a water body such as Loom Pond, when that's where the runoff drains directly, it really, in my opinion, will cause no detrimental impact to the downstream drainage ways because, in my opinion, Loom Pond has the capacity to take some of that additional runoff. It's not, it's not in a flood zone. But that was a question I wanted to ask the board. If you felt that the detention pond was necessary to slow down the runoff? If not, we can take it, we can take it out of the plan, and then there would be even less disturbance within that shoreline zone. But the project, for the most part, pretty well protects the buffer along Loom Pond, with the exception of that, of that detention pond being created there.
Can you please?
And that's, that detention pond will be created right in this area, right here.
So, so.
Right here.
So we'll be crossing pavement or under pavement or?
No, the detention pond will be, it's like a, it's not a pond that will hold water. It's almost like an underdrained soil filter, so the water will get in there, and it will only hold water for like 24 hours.
It'll go underneath that paved area.
Um, there are some storm drain pipes that direct runoff in this way, from this area. The runoff comes down the hill, and then storm drain pipes will redirect that runoff to a detention pond right here.
So it's coming off of asphalt?
It's coming off of asphalt and some of the existing developed area, as well as some of the new pathways and cabins. So basically, it's taken this watershed from this side of the site. This is the area that's being detained right here. Unfortunately, that detention pond, that location is the best spot for it because it's at the most down, it's where all of the runoff is funneling to, so. We looked at trying to preserve that area as like a, put it to a level spread, it to a buffer, which is another opportunity. Unfortunately, when we, when we ran that through the stormwater models, it just didn't slow down the runoff enough. That's the situation with, when you're working on a project that's in really well-drained, sandy soils, and then you add any pavement to it, we always run across this issue is where the runoff numbers go way up, so then you have to do some detention.
Didn't I see somewhere that with this design, the runoff stays the same?
With the detention, with the detention basin installed, the peak rates of runoff will be, stay the same.
And if, if you didn't use it, it would increase?
It would increase, not substantially, by one CFS or so. So it would increase, but it's not like you're introducing like a Walmart above it. It's really, it's only really related to the creation of just this pavement here, this turnaround, the drive aisle, and then the sidewalks around it.
Where's the parking area?
So this is the turnoff, turnaround area. There's some parking for some staff and parents that drop off their kids. The parking in that area is really meant to be short-term. There is, there will be some long-term parking here. This area is like a grass parking area that Camp Nutter used for parking, so that really won't be used a lot, but that's more for the like the long-term parking. Maybe staff that want to stay will park there, but this, there'll be a turnaround area here. I believe there's like six parking spots here.
So you understand that one of the things that we're looking at is the runoff from potential hazard from our oil, gas going to be more impacting toward the lake?
Yeah.
That's, that's all. That's all I'm looking at.
There's not, there's not going to be a significant amount of, it's really parents that come, drop off their children, and then leave, and then come pick them up a week later.
The rains from that area where the vehicles are will be going closer to the lake.
Yeah, well, the.
What John was asking, if it's necessary to have.
It's, it's generally within the same area as the parking that was used as part of the Camp Nutter. So there's not a substantial change. It's in the same spot. One easy thing that you can do to help prevent, prevent like oils and stuff of that nature getting.
Close enough?
That's, close enough.
Scroll down.
One, and this comes up a lot with the municipalities, is one thing that we could do is we could put, you can put oil booms in the catch basins, so the oil booms will sit there, and then when oils come, those booms will just, they'll absorb some of that, and those are fairly cheap enough, and DEP seems to be generally satisfied with using oil booms in catch basins. One of the catch basins, you can introduce like a hood, so it forces the oils will want to flow, and it forces the runoff to go up under, but you only want to use that on the most upstream catch basin, so it can really only be used on one catch basin here. But this isn't going to be a big parking area. There's not, there won't be too many cars parking here to be able to really introduce a lot of petroleums and things of that nature to the watershed.
Where's all your staff parking?
The staff parking, I believe, will just be up in the grass parking area here, up. So on this one, that's where it's shaded brown.
You're up, way up in this area.
Yeah, so that's, that's where the, that's where the, it's like a grass parking area that Camp Nutter used.
It's existing.
Yeah, it's existing. We're proposing just to maintain it as part of this project for any long-term parking. And that sits up, that sits up higher in the watershed, north of this turnaround.
And you're adding another turnaround up top?
Nope, that's gone now as part of this project, yeah.
That's the old.
That's the old one. I was just trying to give a reference.
Yeah, sorry, I should have sent Jason the, what we're looking at here would have been helpful.
We got it right here. Well, I think we should probably schedule a site walk for this. I think we could do that tonight.
Yeah, we should.
Yeah, that's something we can do tonight. We can take a look at, there's a lot to look at there.
Just so I'm clear, what are the steps before ultimately we can gain approval on this? Like, so.
Well, we'll do, schedule a site walk, and we can do that tonight. We'll agree, agreeable date. Then we go through and with your submission and make sure it's complete, make that determination.
We have a public hearing.
Yeah, we'll have to have a public hearing on this. And run through the checklist to make sure it complies with the, with the ordinance.
Before the public hearing?
Say again?
Before the public hearing.
Yeah.
Think we should submit this to the consultant? We can do the site walk first and still decide afterward, but it's something, I mean, it is a big project, site plan and hearing.
Right.
No, this isn't, this isn't site plan.
It's not?
No.
Why not?
What the ordinance says.
Yeah, I can't, what do we define this under?
Yeah, but there was a reason why, it was for educational purposes.
It's on page 18. Small non-residential facilities for educational, scientific, or nature interpreted, interpretation purposes. It's conditional use.
And we all kind of round tabled on that one and agreed on that, too?
Yeah.
So the application can't be deemed voted on complete or looked at tonight?
No, because we have to do the site walk, and we got to do the hearing.
Okay. Is there anything that you're seeing in the application that it's apparently missing? So that I can, anything, anything else, any other information that you're looking for?
The, you did a vernal pool study, but I didn't see it in there.
Okay, yeah, I can submit the vernal pool form, so that wetland, the only wetland on the site is the one in the, right?
Up top.
This corner, right, right over here. And that was looked at for vernal pools. It did have some egg masses. Ultimately, the reason why that area is ponding, there's a 24-inch culvert that goes underneath 109. That culvert is 100% blocked, causing that water to block, detain behind that culvert. We did reach out to Maine DEP, inland fisheries and wildlife about that, and because it's artificially ponded, it is not going to be called a vernal pool. And we do have all the written documentation on that that I can submit.
Okay, yeah, that would be good.
It was like flooded out, I think, when you guys are here almost.
Yeah, it was about four feet deep over by 109.
Right.
Yeah, it's.
I remember seeing it. They don't want them to call it, huh?
We, we let Maine DOT know.
Yeah.
Is there a fence along the property line?
No.
Nowhere?
One side of it over by the nuns, isn't that fenced?
The nuns.
Yeah, right over, right over in this area.
Maybe behind iron tails, it might be fenced.
That's what I was thinking about.
Or in this area, yeah.
The iron tails is right there.
Yeah, I think it is fenced up there, though.
I think there was some discussion on that at the sketch plan.
I think there was a fence around it.
Their whole place?
No, not to the.
The parking area in the back.
Parking lot.
Yeah.
But they have to, there's a sand pit, old sand pit in between there that was, that was used before my time, I'll say that.
The, each building, the proposed buildings, you've got the size and floor area that's noted somewhere?
Yeah, if, if they're not, I'll double-check the site plan. I know we submitted the architectural information for each one of those.
I can't remember if they were in there. Location. And you contacted, I don't know who's, you know, for protected speech. Well, that was part of a wetland.
Yeah, I believe some of that was included as within the application.
It was.
All the specs are on like the last two pages of all the buildings.
All the specs are on like the last two pages of all the buildings. The one, choose the design. Building sizes.
The cabins?
State says no essential habitats affected and no little bit of botanical inches. Oh, has this materials on site, right?
Correct.
I think they're probably in pretty good shape. We should get that site walk scheduled.
Yeah, I'm just trying to run down and see if any-
Going through the standards for conditional uses?
Just to see if there's anything that's-
Yeah, I think they're, I think our focus is the shoreline zone.
Yep.
The, the biggest problem is that Loom Pond is one of the most overpopulated ponds in the town. There's a lot of people on Loom Pond. And the only reason Loom Pond is still in good shape is because it has a giant watershed. Like they, it's a huge watershed for a tiny pond. And if it was a smaller watershed, the thing would already be belly up probably.
Yeah, it fills itself about one point seven times a year.
Yeah.
More than once.
It has a high flushing rate.
Yeah.
Heathbrook drains into it and then there's another brook on the-
Amazing that you knew that multikey that fact. Oh, you live in the town. I was gonna say that's one point seven. That's pretty specific.
It's heath that drains out, isn't it? To Lowell Mouson?
Yeah, drains out to Lowell Mouson. I think at the end of that road.
And then la- last year when we had that extensive rain, it actually Heathbrook flooded, it went back into Loom Pond.
Yeah, it came out quite a ways. All the docks were flooded.
Um, and you made a statement about archaeological and historic resources?
Yeah, I know that in the town standards, they say to review the comprehensive plan for that. And I didn't find any evidence within the comprehensive plan of historic resources.
Yeah, I, I think you're in good shape, right? We should get the site walk scheduled.
A lot of this has already been done since it's, most of it's existing. Site camps.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's the runoff, but I think with this-
Detention pond?
Detention pond, you know, gets, it keeps it what it currently is.
Yeah, it's also important to note that the, the natural wooded buffers that are there today will remain mostly undisturbed except for this area of the detention pond. So there will be um the good seventy-five to hundred foot buffers along Loom Pond the entire length of this site. And for the most part, there's very minimal tree clearing that's needed out here. It's really just-
Little turnaround.
We have to make the trails a little bit wider so that the, the prefabricated buildings can, can go up through. Um, I think they have to be, we have to make sure there's at least fourteen feet of tree clearing. The trails that will be used to bring the prefabricated buildings up through. Um, and then for some of the new cabin areas, just the minimal amount of tree clearing as well as unfortunately the disposal systems will require tree clearing as well.
When do you, another Saturday?
Do we have to post this, Jason?
Um, uh, yeah, but I, I'll make it with the site walk. It's not a public hearing. A public hearing needs, it did notify butters. I just gotta get this on the website and I'll do that tomorrow to make sure that it's uh compliant. Did you want to do it before the next meeting or?
Tomorrow.
Are you available to come back on the fifteenth?
Yeah.
So I'll do it on the, you're gone on the tenth?
I thought we were, the fifteenth, we're doing pepping again, right?
Yeah.
You don't, do you not want to do?
Oh, I'm just, I'm just uh putting it out there that-
That could take a while again.
We could do this before pepping.
Yeah, yeah, we could, but we also haven't really dug into it that much yet.
How about tomorrow?
Right, well, that would be the purpose of doing it before pepping.
Yeah, 'cause if you decide that it's too late, it's too late.
You have to announce the site walk.
Yeah, but it's not-
I won't um-
Yeah, we need the ten days with the site walk.
Not in the ordinance, you don't. Public hearings you do. And I, and or it doesn't, but I can still post it. That only has to be posted online. You don't notify butters. And um, in the general circulation, it just has to be posted in two spots in the town hall and something else like that. I can't remember what it was.
Can we do it in forty-five minutes, the site walk?
There's trails out there. It's pretty easy to walk around.
Yeah, I, I think we could. We do it in five before the next meeting.
Do it then?
Oh, do it on the fifteenth. That would give plenty of time for public notice too.
Right, instead of trying to push it on like next Saturday.
Oh, I thought you guys were talking about doing it. That's why I was saying I can make it. I didn't know you were talking about Saturday. I thought you were talking about doing it.
No.
I was thinking about the fifteenth.
That's what we're discussing. We could do it before the meeting or we need a Saturday, right?
No, I mean, if you I can do it before.
It's pretty easy to get around. And they were really specifically looking at one area anyway, right?
Well.
Two hours on a Saturday or half an hour on a Thursday. What's going to be?
I think we can do it in an hour. I really do.
Unless you want to go up there like-
We could schedule it. Hour and fifteen minutes of before.
Or you push it out to the sixth of October. But you think, and then you do it on a Saturday in between.
Ugh.
What was the problem with the fifteenth?
Nothing. I'm just, I'm just talking.
All right.
Well, I think we should do it on the fifteenth and then we'll be prepared after the site walk to uh-
Five P M?
What do you want to do on the four? I'm talking about the fifteenth.
Five P M, right? On the fifteenth.
Can you guys be there on the fifteenth?
It's the site walk and the meeting.
Well, it would be both, actually.
Okay, and then we do the site walk and come here for a public hearing same-
Well, it wouldn't be a public hearing. It would just be a regular meeting. It wouldn't be a public hearing.
We'd schedule a public hearing after the meeting then. Cause we'll go through in some more detail on your, on-
We have to read through the, through the conditions of approval.
So five o'clock on the fifteenth?
Yeah. Still awake, Jason?
I'm totally fine.
What are you thinking?
Do you have a project narrative too? Like just a written description of the project or is, or is all the-
Yeah.
Yeah, it's attachment, attachment one has some info. If you want. And it kinda goes through the different standards of a conditional use as part of that.
Let me, oh, maybe I did. Is it staterating?
I think I must still have the-
Oh, that's a stormwater report.
Oh, yeah, this can, there's a stormwater plan.
Okay, as long as they have it, yeah.
That update's on in here.
Right.
So yeah, there's a description.
The narrative is still in the original.
Yes.
You have the original Gavin or no?
I do. You just told me to get rid of the old one. Here's the new one. I still have the original.
Oh, I know, I said Gavin.
Well, in terms of the map, you know, for some reason this is new from what we had two weeks ago.
Yeah, we did update just that detention pond, so it changed the stormwater report, but nothing else-
Changed everything, okay.
Nothing else within the original application changed.
All right.
Have to remember bring that one next time. Right.
All right.
All right.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if you want to, if y'all just want to say anything.
Do I say?
No, it's just if, if there was no asphalt there, would there be any like thing to consider further?
It's the fact that it's piping close to the common, that it's source protection just in the lull. Is there anybody who's ever been in a lull? Um, but because it's asphalt in particular?
Well, just because it's, it's an area where cars are going to be and the grain is right there. So you have a leak and oil leak.
Yeah, but if they-
Further away.
Put the floaty things in.
Yeah, there's other considerations with stormwater, like the temperature in the water area.
Well, yeah.
Other everything.
Yeah.
Yeah, the detention pond would, would uh-
Cool it down.
Cool it down, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, cause it's only gonna have what riprap and a mesh in it?
No riprap. Um, there is a little bit of riprap on the site, but not very much.
It's gonna have riprap and a mesh.
It's gonna have-
In the detention pond.
The detention pond will just have an erosion control fabric for erosion purposes, but-
Yeah, what's all that, black?
I'll have to, look, there might be some riprap at the overflow, but that can easily be changed to a high velocity like permanent fabric. Personally, I prefer the fabric better 'cause I don't like seeing a lot of riprap.
Is the fabric gonna be black though?
No, so the, the fabric is-
You know where I'm going with that one, right? Okay.
No, we can, I'll have to look at the detail on that. If, if we do show riprap, that can easily be swapped with um an erosion control fabric that's permanent.
Yeah.
Uh, most erosion control fabric that you see eventually it's biodegradable, so it disappears. But there's fabric that's made for like overflows so that it's permanent there. So it reduces the scour and erosion at the overflow. So I can look into that and swap that detail.
All right, okay.
Thanks.
Thank you. All right, we'll see you on the fifteenth. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I just gotta spend more time with this one.
Yeah, I've been on this one too much. The other one too. I wonder where I was going with that?
Yeah, no, good, no, yeah.
Well-
But it, it's comprehensive.
It just takes me a minute to process.
Well, it's hard to switch gears.
After you said, I wanted to say, you know why, I know why.
All right, well, yeah, it's black attracts heat. So it's like-
Well, honestly, we should have pepping on a separate night from everyone else.
Really should.
Yeah, it's true too.
But it's hard because we only have so many meetings.
Well, I hope he was taking good notes and we took good notes 'cause we mentioned several things they need to address, so.
A lot, so.
I didn't know there was so much.
I didn't either.
Oh, there's more.
We're not, we, we're only-
There's more.
We're probably halfway through it.
All right.
Halfway through the material.
All right.
I didn't reali- I, I didn't realize we were gonna dig into it that, that far, but-
Well, we just went over the consultant's memos.
Right, no, I know, I know.
There's no new business. Penning Project is Michael and Tammy Murray, one six eight Grandview Road. And that's just the application to greatest practical extent, which we had the site walk scheduled, but-
Why was it canceled?
It was canceled for, um, well, they did, they weren't done. They, so we had asked them to provide some information on their plan. They couldn't get that done. I also, I messed up on something too, but we both, I spoke with them and they spoke, and I called them and they're like, oh, well, don't worry, we, we can't. We, we weren't able to provide the information the planning board needed anyway, so we were gonna, we were looking to push it up.
And we don't know when it would be.
They just couldn't meet this deadline. I don't know.
Yeah, and so at the next meeting, we'll probably schedule a site walk again for them.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
I, I don't know. I, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, that's it.
Make a motion, Major.
Yeah, sure. I just was gonna ask about the next, what was at the next meeting. It's Camp Hitta, pep in.
And should be about it.
And, and, and Joe?
Yeah, the uh subdivision. I'll do some research on that for, to find the whatever regulations I can find.
No, I'd appreciate that, but honestly, it's not, it's not the duty of the board to spend hours waiting through legal documents to find the thing that we need.
I don't mind getting the word.
The applicant is supposed to provide it.
Yeah, well, and then when the lawyer, when the lawyer tells us everything's fine, I said, good, give me the documentation that-
If you read the letter, if you read the email that I sent to him and asked, I specifically asked for the statute, I just never followed back up and said, hey, what is the number? What is it actually? He just said, yes, it is.
Yeah, well, that's an oversight on his part. I think you did a great job.
Thanks for showing up today.
Thanks for showing up. All right, so we have-
Pepping, the same, basically the same line.
We want uh these people first, right?
Well, Joe should be relatively quick if we have uh-
If we got those papers.
If we got something that verifies.
Right, you're talking about Joe.
Cause then we just gotta run through the checklist and it's there.
Well, he's, and then he needs his public hearing again.
Public hearing.
Right.
Public hearing, yeah.
So, cause you, obviously you guys know that I'm new at this. Is there always two public hearings to a, to a subdivision? You have a preliminary and a, and a final?
There's a, a preliminary is optional, final is mandatory.
Right.
Because we, we want to present to the public when it's done.
Yeah, the reason why, and I should have thought of over, over better, but the reason why I didn't put them first was because Ben Smith was coming in here and I wanted to get him in and out. I didn't realize we were gonna be here for two hours with Ben, which is fine. It is what it is.
Yeah.
So, and I understand that you guys have done the, the public hearings first in the past. I just didn't-
Well, if there's ten people waiting in the audience, we like to get, you know-
Sure.
Get here, yeah, so.
Yeah, normally public hearings get more turnout.
Right, right.
It's just not fair to not give, I mean, I understand they talked to Joe and that's good, but it's not fair to not give them the opportunity.
Right, and I did meet with two of the, oh, one, I think one was a husband and wife. They came in to, and asked me questions earlier and it was more pertaining to um the use of the roads. What are they gonna do? Because there was an issue on there with some construction and, you know, getting, stone wall drive getting beat up. And they didn't want to see that happen again. And that was really the only pertaining question. But it could have been more. That was what they asked me.
Those questions should come before us at a public hearing anyway, because it's not just us listening to it.
I don't think the board can say, hey, you can't drive your truck on this road.
No, no, but I'm just saying whatever.
Well, the project really doesn't even touch that, that road.
Um, so stone wall drive goes around the backside.
It loops around, but they can, they do construction on the road that we want to or west shore.
Yeah, Nichols Line, anyway, but-
All right, Josh. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Just need to vote. You've had an emotion in a second.
Who's got a motion?
I moved that we adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? All right, thank you.